Okay, so good evening, everybody, and welcome to the South Burlington City Council meeting for February third, two thousand and twenty five. Uh, we will start with the pledge of allegiance led by Andrew Chalnick.
Oh, where is the flag? We'll start again. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, Andrew. Now go to item two, which is instructions on exiting the building in case of an emergency and review of our technology options. Jesse Baker, city manager.
Thank you. So for those in the room, thanks for joining us in person. If there's an emergency in the building or in the room, you can go out either side of the rear of the auditorium and then turn left or right to get outside. For those uh, joining us remotely, thank you for joining us as well. If you'd like to speak during any item on the agenda, you can turn your camera on and the chair will call on you. Or you can indicate in the chat that you would like to speak and I'll have the chair calling you. Other than that, we are not monitoring the chat for content.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, item three, agenda review. Uh, do we have any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of agenda items tonight? Yes.
So I um mistakenly left off your uh, review of next meeting's agenda from this agenda. So I would ask that you add that review of both your February um eighteenth and potentially your February sixth agenda to um, right before item sixteen, or a new item sixteen.
Okay, so we're gonna create a fifteen A before sixteen where it's the re- it's the preview of next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to item four, which is comments and questions from the public that are not related to any items on the agenda tonight. Are there any comments from anybody in the audience? Or, okay, and there's nobody online, just to get line them up here. So Lydia, come on up, please, to the You can choose to sit down, or you can take the podium standing up. It's your choice. Just make sure that that green, bright green light is on when you touch the button. And remember to identify yourself.
Good evening. I'm Lydia Diamond. As you already know. And I'm on the ballot. Because it is my heart's desire to be the first black female s- city councillor. And I have several reasons why. I need to be elected. Representation doesn't exist for me as a resident of South Burlington who pays rent for the past nineteen years. Representation doesn't exist for me as a black indigenous person of color. Representation doesn't exist for me as a good neighbor. I don't feel welcome, heard, or seen. And I want reparations in the form of votes. Because it's two thousand and twenty-five. And it's time to allow a person of color on the city council of South Burlington. You, if you've had one, I know nothing about it. I have inquired, I have researched, and I couldn't find anyone. But there's a reason for that. Because you are intimidating. You white, wealthy, and believe it or not, you don't want supremacy added to that particular identity. But in watching I wanna say January thirteenth, South Burlington City Council it said that there are twenty-one thousand residents of South Burlington. And seventeen percent BIPOC. Well, where are those people? Why hasn't anyone stepped up? They have children in school, they pay taxes just like you, their house might not be as big with the open spaces, but people of color exist. And they don't feel seen, they don't feel heard, and I'm one of them. I want I want to find a way for those damn F thirty-fives to be quiet or get out. My family has been traumatized repeatedly, and I'm sick of it. And I need, I just need to be heard. I have seven grandchildren, every one of them born at UVM. The oldest is gonna be twenty years old, and the youngest will be two this year. And they only know me, Nana, for one address. And that's Long Island Road. And my grandbabies have never had a part to play or somewhere safe they could run around and be children, and it's not fair. Oh, shoot, mm, sorry, anyway. I need reparations in the form of votes. Because there are so many people, black, white, pink, purple, and polka dot in this community struggling, struggling to maintain. Nobody's asked them, well, how did you survive COVID-nineteen? Nobody cares, cuz I hear about it all the time. The elders that live in my building, we don't feel safe. And no matter how many times we called the landlord, nothing has been done. Cuz we don't, we are not seen and we are not heard. I wanna see the Islamic Society of Vermont. I wanna see a space for them to bury their dead. They live in this community, they work in this community, they pay taxes, and they suffer because they feel invisible and unheard, just like me. You want committee members to step up and help. I want them to have the state stipend of fifty bucks to help them step up. Because they need gas money, and they need babysitters in order to come and help. I want reparations for the sick and despicable violent violations that I have barely survived right here in this state. You talk about public safety, it's a joke. And it's not funny. So I'm running because I need folks to know I wanna represent them. And it's past the time that we get it done. We, not just you, we. Because there are twenty-one thousand people in the city of South Burlington, and you may think that there's only seventeen percent. But so many people are coming to Vermont, but they, they live in fear of ICE. Even if they good, they live in fear. And it's not okay. And the parasite president doesn't help anybody, not even y'all. And it's gonna get worse for poor people struggling to maintain. And it's time to vote for Lydia Diamond. Cuz I'm not new to this, I'm true to this. I'm talking about my life, my survival, my legacy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Diamond. Going into item number, any other comments? Anybody online? Oh, Ryan Doyle. There are a lot of items on the agenda tonight. In general, yeah, yeah. You're welcome.
Ryan Doyle, um. I uh, I've been thinking about this uh, since the charter committee meeting last week. There was, there were just so many questions focused on the cost of providing a vote to people who live in our community who don't have US citizenship, and I felt really discouraged by that. And it's not you know, we, we have a very capable city manager who's really well informed on these kinds of issues and is well connected and could easily work out a very functional, cost-effective way to provide enfranchisement to people who currently do not have it in our community. As Lydia was just pointing out, actually, there's a lot of people who live in fear and um, they can't even express their opinions at the ballot box. But it's, it's also all of that, those comments in conjunction with the historical situation in South Burlington being very undemocratic. We have at-large district, which is the largest in the state of Vermont. Uh, when you look at what people have had to spend on elections, you'll see that it's exhaustively expensive to become elected here compared to anywhere else in the state. In fact, the only person who runs in a larger district than our city councillors and uh, is the mayor of Burlington. And so we have about the same representation on the city council per person as we do in Montpelier. It should be a lot better than the same rate that we have in Montpelier. And I think just to maybe make it more frustrating is that when I look at the city's website, if you wanna be on a committee, it says how to apply to be on a committee. It says how long people have served on the committee and when they're up for a revote. But if you look at the city council page, it doesn't say how you can get onto the city council. It doesn't say when people's terms expire and when they're up for reelection. And you know, Lydia has experience, she, she's run before. Most people haven't. There's a very firm gate to entry, and I really wanna see the city open that gate for democracy to happen uh, and be a step in uh, opening it up for everyone at every step of the way and at every part of the process. So that we can have better representation of the totality of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else in the audience or online? Okay. We move on to item five, which is councillors announcements and reports on committee assignments and city managers' report. Laurie, you wanna go first?
Sure, I can go first. So attended a sextons meeting on the fourteenth of January with Andrew Chalnick and Sextons. And that was a pretty lively planning and uh, meeting, talking about cemetery improvement and active things, and then there was a preliminary management structure discussion. And we will actually be meeting again tomorrow, and the focus of that meeting is strictly, or not strictly, but is focused on review of the deck draft government gov- governance document that we have, so that we can work with city staff and the manager and uh, find how the management and support structure for the Sextons is gonna find a home within our very busy government and be able to move forward. So that was a, hopefully tomorrow will be a pretty productive meeting. On the twenty-second, we had a, a school council steering committee meeting. And the main takeaway for me from that meeting was, aside from budget issues, which are going to be an ongoing issue and uh, a tough nut that our legislature is now trying to grapple with. Was a discussion about the possibility of shifting the voting date for the school budget, which could include or not shifting um, our town meeting vote from the date that it is to perhaps later in the month, so that there's more time after the school budget information has solidified mostly to be able to effectively let the community understand what it is they're voting for on, on the school budget. So that is an issue that will be ongoing and will also be really impacted by how this new school system structure triggers off over the next year or so. On the twenty-fifth, Elizabeth and I had a conversation with the councillor here at the library. And I'll just say, after the, after the conversation, I was downstairs in the kids' space seeing my grandchild who was there with family. That space is phenomenal. And the amount that it gets used on the weekends is mind-blowing. And personally, I'm really grateful that we have been able to put money in this year's budget to have it open on Sundays because our families use the heck out of it, and the weekends are the most important time for them. But at the conversation with the councillor, we discussed school funding and vote, vote implications, because that came up with people who had been at the steering committee meeting. There was a request for asking if we could find a way to have better advanced notice for what's coming up in our council conversations. So that the community can know in advance when they need to be thinking about meeting us to, to have response. It was mentioned that we have the um, agenda planner that we work with. I don't know if that's a public document or could be, but people, the conversation was, how can we as the public know what's happening next month or the month after, so that we can do the homework we need to do instead of finding out on Thursday? So that was something that, that I wanted to bring back, and the other thing that was talked about that I won't say caught my attention, but um, I've heard numerous times was talking about the possibility of using Robert's Rules of Order during our council meetings as a way to perhaps streamline our conversations and maybe make it so we could get out of here an hour or two earlier. It has its pros and cons, and it's tough to get used to, but it was brought up as something that we should maybe reconsider at some point. And then uh, I was at the legislative breakfast at um, Beta. And it was on Monday this, last week, I think, and um, if anybody has not been to Beta, I encourage you to go. I encourage you to get a tour of the facility. It is mind-blowing what they are doing there, and the energy in that building from everybody that is working there is just remarkable. And Kyle Clark, uh, the, I think he's the CEO, right? Spoke about, uh, gave a really exciting update about all the aspects of what they're doing that will support uh, our youngsters coming up interested in tech positions. What they're doing with flight instruction and just the many facets of their building or their business, which has the potential to grow exponentially going forward. So, pretty remarkable. And Mike Dcheck gave a rather quick conversation about um, the uncertainty with funding that we are all facing with what's happening on a national level and there was just an air, and this was in the, in the coun- uh, conversation with the council also, of uncertainty. Which hopefully over the next six months or so, we might get some clarity, but it's could have big impacts on, on decisions we make. And lastly, uh, last Thursday evening, the library aired The Quietest Year movie, which was a movie that Andrew Chalnick and I had seen and that I brought to Mira at the library as something that I thought the community would enjoy. There were in excess of sixty-five people here for the showing, which was remarkable. It's a really enjoyable show, which act- movie, which actually will be aired on PBS on the sixth. So anybody that hasn't seen it that would be interested, it's available, and it's a pretty remarkable local film. And that's it.
Thank you, Laurie. Mike?
First of all, if, if people see me a little bit dozy during the course of city council, I just wanna self-advantage. I just returned from a trip overseas for work, so I'm dealing with eight hours of jet lag, so if, if it's one of your presentations I seem to be nutting off, please don't take it personally. But prior to taking off since the last city council meeting, I, I had my attendance at, as the South Burlington Commissioner to the GMT Board. A little bit of good news there, and the gap in funding that is anticipated for this year has been, we found s- some more cost-saving ways to sh- to shrink it. Uh, and while as possible, some additional funding from the legislature that may lead to perhaps a little bit not as, let's call it less, a little bit less dramatic or deep cuts than initially planned, but uh, that's just how it's now looking. But still, the goal is to move, continue to move forward within reimagining uh, the situation and uh, the, the routes, as well as working closely with municipalities to get to what we all want is a sustainable, high-use public transit system. On the twenty-second, as Laurie mentioned, there was also the steering board meeting where we uh, besides talking about budget, I think what Laurie pointed out is, is, is very pertinent. Uh, I also welcome, and uh, I know there are issues to work through in terms of costs, but uh, if we would, as suggested, find a way to shift the dates. And that would in turn allow greater information, more accurate information for residents to make decisions and understand what goes into the budget. I would only applaud that. I think it is all about bringing more transparency to governance and making it simpler for, for people to understand what's going on. In the same way, I, whether it's Robert's Rules of Orders or other means, I did meet with uh, city council members from uh, other constitu- uh, municipalities around us. Colchester, Essex Junctions, for example, recent, just before I left. And uh, you know, they seemed to be able to wrap things up around eight thirty-nine, that's a general rule. And it's not just about for us the convenience, I think it's, again, uh, reducing a barrier to participation. I think if we make the hours a little more manageable, whether it's for committees or whether, especially for city councils, I think it makes it less of a, a challenge for people to step forward and, and participate. And as long as we're on that issue, uh, I also, you know, strongly believe to, another barrier to remove is sort of reference this evening, the costs of running, and therefore I, I continue to believe and hope that the charter, we will uh, uh, charge the charter committee to, again, look at the issue of ward systems that would definitely reduce, you know, the time and costs of, of running for city council. But I think that's it in terms of what has transpired, at least in my engagement since the last city council, so thank you. Oh, one, I'm sorry, one other thing, I, I also was able to uh, get into the, the other paper, if you haven't seen it, a article that wrote that I think is something that's very pressing, and it's about hopefully to promote a conversation about really how to keep South Burlington affordable. You know, we have so many lo- lovely accolades attached to our city, but I think, you know, that's only gonna really matter if we also keep it affordable, so a growth revenue strategy is something I think we just really need to tackle uh, going forward. Thanks, Tim, sir.
Thank you, Mike. I enjoyed your article in the other paper. Elizabeth?
Along with participating with Laurie on the um, conversation with the councillor and with the steering committee with the school district, um, we had a housing committee meeting, which really served as an educational forum for the reconfigured committee that used to be called Affordable Housing and the Housing Trust. Those were uh, combined by council a while ago. And uh, the focus was really on the inception of the Housing Trust Fund, which was really intended to be gap funding. There are two resolutions that were passed in the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen timeframe by council. And um, I am gonna forward some of the background in, uh, information by way of baseline education to my colleagues on the council. And then we're, we're moving forward with um, a lot of the activities associated with what, the, the new charge that's been approved by council for the housing committee and developing a work plan around that. In addition to that, we had a charter committee meeting with a focus on um, the charge of evaluating all resident voting. And this was a meeting that we had invited several um, clerks and um, managers to. So we had representatives from Burlington and Winewski, and we actually postponed the Montpelier representative to our next meeting to speak. But received quite a bit of information really on two aspects of all resident voting, and one was the equity aspect, and the other was a logistics aspect, which logistics are, are, can be very complicated, and it was really educational to hear from these two communities, sort of how they implemented all resident voting in the communities after, uh, after they introduced it. And um, the logistics of how they dealt with um, language access to um, uh, support tools, to ballots, to separate um, voter lists, things like that. So um, it's really a two-pronged approach that I think the committee will come back to council with ultimately on both equity on, and on logistics. I attended the legislative forum with four of our legislative representatives here uh, at the library, and a lot of the focus was on um, affordability and housing availability, on um, really the unhoused population, um, economic growth and opportunity, uh, support of law enforcement. A very specific operational issue on lane filtering and splitting, um, federal political implications and as well as the tax base and tax burden for the community. Um, so that was a, a good conversation. And I think the last one that I had attended was the, there was a town hall meeting sponsored by the Agency of Commerce and Community Development that was online, and the focus there was on some of the proposed initiatives at the state level that really, an acronym is PATH, but it's really the pathway to accelerating and transforming housing for Vermont. So it was complimentary to some of the housing committee's work, and it's a number of funding initiatives that would look at both um, new building, but also rehabilitation as well. And I think you'll see some information when I forward on the prior resolutions and some of the educational information from the housing committee that those are elements that are um, considered in the, in the resolutions that council passed back in two thousand and fifteen. That's it.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Andrew?
Okay, it's been a busy few weeks, but in the theme of keeping us moving along, I'm gonna say I attended the legislative session, the session, the, the sectors meeting, Quietest Year film, the joint session with the school board, and I echo everything everyone said. One thing about Beta, um, they pointed out to me the tank that's now in operation for unleaded fuel for their flight training. Um, folks, remember, I, I met with Chris Caputo, uh, Beta, to try and encourage them to move away from leaded fuel. So Beta has now done that, and we'll give you setting up a meeting with the Flight Academy to, to get them hopefully to move away from, from leaded fuel to unleaded fuel. Folks know, any bit of lead in the environment is harmful, right, at any level, and it stays around for a long time, so I'm hoping we can get that done. In addition, I attended an energy committee meeting. We spent some time talking about electric transmission lines in Vermont, planning us going statewide to improve the transmission of electricity. Talked a lot about how to engage a community, particularly undeserved populations. They point to a collaboration of established groups, talked about reaching out to the Howard Center, and we discussed plans for an energy festival again um, next fall. Attended the Economic Development Committee meeting where um, a lot of discussion about the Planning Commission's request as to how and whether to change zoning in our commercial areas to allow, we're not already allowed uh, for residential housing or other amenities. The recommendation from that committee to the Planning Commission was to allow, not for permanent housing, but extended stay hotels, childcare restaurants, health clubs, medical clinics. Uh, the committee recommended against Uh, the committee recommended against permanent residential housing in these commercial zones, given the limited land available for industrial and commercial uses. I attended, um, a Safe Roots to School meeting where we, you know, discussed the council's response to what, um, Safe Roots to School had asked about Richard Tarrant sidewalk, White Street. Um, we also, uh, discussed, you know, how to move, what would next steps for that committee? Uh, decided to focus on Orchard and Rick Markot this spring to determine their safe routes and do the GSI mapping, the obstacles. We also discussed, um, a citywide bike TED event this spring that, um, I hope will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, I also attended the legislative forum where there was a lot of talk about education funding and the judiciary and the revolving doors for uh, for some folks that are arrested repeatedly and just cited and then and put back on the street. Um, I attended a public arts committee meeting. Uh, there will be a new show in the gallery coming up, uh, not too long from now. Two artists, one that takes, um, I would say, sky photographs and some, uh, astronomical photographs and and prints them on metal. They're really beautiful. And the other artist does some hand-drawn and colored uh, paintings that are inspired by ice formations and things having to do with the earth and ice. And, uh, so we saw some samples of that. They're really, they're really nice. I also attended The Quietest Year. I'm glad I don't have a rooster living next door to me. Um, I attended a planning commission meeting where, um, two reps from the CCRPC, uh, shared these, um, these zoning maps that are more regional with the commission, and they went over and grandeurly looked at different areas, trying to understand what their interpretation was versus what our own maps were like. Uh, it was really interesting. Um, uh, I also attended the city's Cabin Fever Party, which was a delayed holiday party at Vermont Pool and Bar, and that was a lot of fun. I shot some really bad pool. I didn't lose any money, though, thank goodness. Um, and, uh,
There was no betting.
There's, oh, well, no, there wasn't, there wasn't. But but I threatened to, but it didn't happen. And then on a personal note, um, I expressed the last meeting, uh, some frustration with an attempt to rename, uh, the park in Venice, Florida, Maxine Barrett Park, named after my mother. Since then, there was a meeting of the Venice Citizens Advisory Board, which I attended remotely, but I was not allowed to speak, but a letter from me was read by another resident. And they voted unanimously not to rename the park. So we're pretty happy about that. And I thank, uh, Jackie Minio in Venice for alerting me to this and, uh, all of her help and all the people that wrote in to the Venice Gondolier Local Paper, kind of like the other paper, and, you know, recommending that they not change the name of the park. Uh, but that was another interesting view into another government, right? And how they function. And their meetings are kind of similar to ours, you know, believe it or not. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, I'm not going to help in the speeding things along thing. Sorry about that. It has been three weeks since our last time together, though, so. Uh, I do want to start by introducing Madison Sousa, who's with us tonight. Maddie, uh, on Friday was promoted to being our HR manager. She has been our HR generalist for the last two years and previously, um, served the Burlington School District. Uh, she's a Saint Mike's grad and is known on to the staff as being a very talented HR professional, very smart, very hardworking and trustworthy, and is exactly the kind of leader we want to be investing in um, as we grow our city. So we will now have an HR manager and an HR generalist. So yay, Maddie. Welcome officially. Um, I was asked to provide, uh, my thoughts on the impacts of some federal decision-making on local funding. Um, I have a lot of thoughts. They are not at all final. We have no, um, definitive direction from the executive or the judiciary system. Um, what we experienced last week was, uh, staff working in our public safety teams who are grant-funded through a pass-through federal grant through the state, um, being told that they, that they would not be able to draw it down. We, I made the decision to keep them in the interim, um, and of course, that was immediately reversed. Um, we are tracking though what those decisions are. I to, for me, the real linchpin of this is going to be are decisions made prospectively or retrospectively? Is, is the federal government going to take away funding that's already been allocated? Um, as you all know, we have tens of millions of dollars of federal, uh, money coming in to support um, our TIFF projects, coming in to support our wastewater treatment plant projects. Um, that's all funding that's already been awarded and allocated. Um, but we'll see. So those are really the things that we are tracking. And then, um, on the prospectively side, um, Bettina's already, you'll hear from her later on, but already doing diving into external funding sources and are curious about how federal decisions will impact our ability to leverage federal dollars into the city. So that's what I am thinking about at the moment, um, but certainly watching the very changing landscape as everybody else is. Don't make it go anywhere. Can, can you come to the mic?
Ms. I'm gonna come up and
Just because the people online can't hear you. This stuff. Oh, my apologies. I shouldn't have
It's offensive.
Okay.
Please. And, and I'm surprised nobody had any comments for me. But I just wanted
Yes, thank
Say that linchpin. I'm sure you got another term you could use.
Thank you for the, thank you. You're right. A couple of other updates for you. Our online permitting system, um, is up and running for file, fire rental registry and the clerk's office, um, and then planning and zoning and public works is under construction. Um, so you can see that on our new website. We are already getting online permits coming in. Um, we have kicked off our economic development strategic planning process. Um, the SBBA will be hosting a discussion for South Burlington businesses on the twentieth at eight thirty at the library. Um, and at the same day, the twentieth, at six P M, um, here in City Hall for the community. So again, February twentieth, we will be doing ads. We'll be putting ads in the newspaper. Uh, but that's to create our economic development strategic plan citywide. Um, our new ambulance is in the city, um, that, just for the record, that ambulance was ordered Steve's first week working with the city. That was in July twenty twenty-two, and it arrived a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we are fitting it up and training on it this week, and it should be operational by the end of next week. Um, and now that we are running two ambulances at all time, it, the oldest ambulance will become our reserve ambulance. So we will be able to keep all of our, uh, fleet in action. Um, I did want to share, you may, council may have heard this through other, um, other avenues, um, because of our police department staffing levels right now, uh, we and a police officer who is being deployed, um, for about a year, we did need to pull uh, Corporal Williamson, Officer Bree, out of the schools to cover road shifts for a couple of weeks. Um, it's not our preferred decision, but we need to maintain our minimum three on at all time on the road. Um, in better news, our newest recruit, Officer Tong, reported to the academy today. So we are working on backfilling. Um, I want to thank Jennifer for her leadership. Folks may have noticed when you came in, there's a new cupboard for food shelf donations right outside the library door. Um, folks, was there coming to City Hall to do business are welcome to donate there. Folks who are coming to City Hall to do business are also welcome to take food or take, um, provisions that are there. Um, and then anything that's remaining will be, um, given to the South Burlington Food Shelf. Um, I think I will, well, so a couple of fun events, um. So when I was growing up, author Catherine Patterson was one of my very favorite authors. And she is coming on this Saturday at ten thirty. She wrote, um, The Great Gilly Hopkins. Folks remember reading that book as a little kid, those. Anyway, she's coming on Saturday at ten thirty, uh, to the library. Um, and then next February twelfth, Wednesday, um, at seven thirty here at City Hall is the annual um, State of the City event with the SBBA. And this year will be the school, too. So the superintendent and I will both be presenting our budgets and moving forward. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Move on to the consent agenda now. And it's, um, fairly long, I think, so. So we have, uh, item A, which is, uh, consider and sign dispersments. Uh, item B, which is approve the award of the Brewer Parkway Line Replacement Project to Aldrich and Elliott and authorize the Director of Public Works to sign all related paperwork. Item C, approve the award, uh, for the Dorset Street East Tank Project to Engineers Construction Incorporated and authorize the Director of Public Works to sign all the related paperwork. Item D, which is approve the use of no more than twenty-five thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance for the purpose of updating the project and list fee calculations in the Fire Protection Impact Fee Ordinance. Item E, which is accept the certification of increment and presentation of the FY twenty twenty-four Annual TIFF Report. Item F, conditionally accept deeds of easement from the Northeast Corey LLC, Corey Hill Road LLC and QHC Lot Three Condominium Association Incorporated, initially provided two thousand and four as an irrevocable offer. Also from Larkin Family Partnership, Larkin Family Partnership Lesser, Conigle Equities LLC, Lessee, Vermont CVS Pharmacy, Sublessee, and the, for the pedestrian and bike bridge over the Interstate eighty-nine at exit fourteen and authorize the city manager to execute a license agreement for the use of public right-of-way. Item G, approve the South Burlington Certificate of Highway Mileage for the year ending March first, twenty twenty-five. And those are all the items from the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Um, could we, uh, just have a quick discussion on the, um, uh, water tank, just to clarify the, um, I think we've received something in writing, but just for the public to clarify the, um, uh, increased expense associated with the tank itself, I believe. But still within, within budget?
Come on down.
Good evening, everybody. Tom DiPietro, Public Works Director. Uh, I think the question is, why was the bid price higher than the engineer's estimate? Is that generally what I'm at, being asked?
Yes, I think, I think the, the bid was at five-three, and then it was five-eight was the total cost and just refreshing my memory. Thank you, Tom.
Um, in your packet, you should have received a memo from me, um, talking about this, as well as, um, information pulled together by the engineer explaining the cost increase. So really what it boiled down to is the fact that we last got an estimate for materials for the tank itself about six months ago. So, um, that number, uh, was considerably lower than the newer, the, the number that the, um, tank manufacturer provided to the bidders. So it went up by quite a bit in that timeframe. Um, so that explains the increase. Um, and the engineer had gone through the numbers and made sure it wasn't something like maybe site work or something was was causing those differences, but it's really just the, the cost of the tank.
Was that incremental, kind of the, the bulk of the difference between five-three and five-eight?
Uh, it was the maju-, yes, yep. It was the majority of the difference between the engineer's estimate and the low bid.
So, I mean, that's half a million dollars or four hundred thousand, something.
It was around four hundred, yeah.
That was in six months, that was the incremental expense.
Yep. So again, there's the number they provided to us when our engineer called around to get estimates for this type of work. And then they gave the contractors that bid on it a higher number when they asked, yeah. So we could have, you know, right before we put out the bid, gone back and asked them for their number. Um, in hindsight, maybe we should have, just so we wouldn't have been surprised when that number came in. But in the end, we wouldn't be able to change anything about that.
So i- is there any risk that that number could go up again because of recent developments in tariffs among the three countries that are north and south of us? Because of the steel? Or is this steel already onshore and?
So they've given us a bid price, and as long as we award within thirty days, they have to hold that price.
Okay.
Though I could go back and look at the fine print of certain things to make sure there's not a provision in there related to tariffs or anything of that nature, you know? So.
I'm sure everybody's thinking about these types of things right now, but.
And that's why, it's just to our benefit to get these projects bid out as soon as possible, some of these large infrastructure projects.
But you have a, you have a valid bid right now.
I do.
Is it adequate, Elizabeth?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Oh, Mike?
Question on the mileage, Allen Road. I just wondered, hey, I take advantage of you here. What does that actually mean by, what are the implications for us besides just acknowledging that it's higher traffic? Because also, as I think I sent in, noticed that, uh, half of it has a walkway, the other half does not. Does that move that process forward? Just because I, I drive that street and I see often people walking up on the side of the road.
Yep. Um, so we'll enter the second half first, the, uh, shared use path. Uh, that is currently a city project that Erica and her team are moving forward, uh, to continue that path from where it stops down to Route Seven. Um, but that's totally unrelated to the road classification. Uh, the road is just the state of Vermont system of classifying different roads. And we've heard class four roads, right? Otherwise, there's class three, which are residential, class two, and then class one municipal roads. Um, really, the impact for us is two things. Um, once it goes from class three to class two, uh, that in the class-two destination really, um, recognized the connectivity it provides as well as the increase in traffic. But, uh, Vtrans will now stripe the yellow lines for us. So that comes out of our striping budget and whatever, you know, amount that would have been. Uh, and they do that annually, uh, now that it's class two. And then we get a slightly higher payment from the state, uh, for the town highway grant. Uh, I think it amounted to two thousand some odd dollars annually, uh, since it was class three, now it's class two.
Thanks. Good news on all fronts.
So any other discussion? Are you ready for the vote? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Uh, we're gonna go to item seven, which was to hold a second reading and public hearing on a Code of Ethics Investigate- Investigation and Enforcement Ordinance in response to the state's new municipal ethics statute. And we'll have Colin, the city attorney. Good evening, Colin.
On, uh, in last, in the legislative session, the legislature passed, uh, Act one seventy-one, which enacted a municipal code of ordinances, which went into effect on January first. Uh, we're subject to that new municipal code of ordinances. One of the components, if you will, that was left out of that municipal, municipal ordinances was a mechanism by which, uh, complaints are investigated uh, and procedures for doing that and enforcement mechanisms that are available under the, under the, under the code. Um, and under the, the statute, we were required to, uh, adopt an ordinance that addressed those two things. Uh, before you is, uh, for second reading and public hearing, uh, is a, is that ordinance that was before you on January sixth for a first reading. Uh, since then, it's been published in the other paper. It's been available uh, for viewing at the clerk's office and posted outside the clerk's office, uh, and in our website. Uh, and so I think tonight we're ready to go for a public hearing. And if you, uh, following the public hearing, if you are agreeable to pass this ordinance, um, uh, you can move to pass this ordinance. Um, following that, we recommend that we currently have a, uh, ethics policy that we have generally adopted every year, um, for elected and appointed officials. Um, with that, uh, with the, the new municipal code of ethics that the legislature passed and with the ordinance that you have adopted, uh, the policy is somewhat in conflict with that. It's largely similar, but it's, it has different provisions included in it. Um, so we recommend that you, um, you redact your, your current policy, uh, pull it back and make a motion on that as well tonight.
Thank you, Colin.
I move that we approve reading of the Code of Ethics Investigation and Enforcement Ordinance by title and open, uh, public hearing on the proposed ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. So we're now open for a public hearing on this second reading on the Code of Ethics Investigation and Enforcement Ordinance in response to the state's new municipal ethics statute. So is there any public comment? Because this is now a public hearing. Anybody from the audience or anybody online wish to speak on this subject? I don't see anybody raising their hand. Going once, going twice. Can I have a motion to close the?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous again. So now we're on to item eight, which is discussion and possible action to, uh, approve and adopt the Code of Ethics Investigation and Enforcement Ordinance as presented and in response to the state's new municipal ethics statute. And then in addition, we would want to vote to repeal the current city's conflict of interest and ethics policy for elected and appointed officials that was adopted back in twenty twenty-four.
I move that the city council adopt the Code of Ethics Investigation and Enforcement Ordinance without amendment.
Second that?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, so.
I move to repeal the city of South Burlington conflict of interest and ethics policy for elected and appointed officials adopted by the city council on March seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's really important that we adopted the new one and then repealed the old one and not reversed, because there would have been like ten microseconds where we could have done something.
You never know what can happen in that brief. You never know what can happen in that brief.
You know. All right.
Thank you all.
And uh, so that takes care of item eight. Thank you, Attorney McNeil. Uh, we're now going to um item nine, which is uh a hold a public hearing on the Vermont Community Development Program Funding Award to Summit Properties for their projects at O'Brien Hillside as part of their grant closeout. And Paul Connor will be coming to the desk for that. He's the Director of Planning and Zoning. Good evening, Paul.
Good evening. Uh, Zeke Davison is here from Summit Properties as well. He's online, so um no action is required or requested of council. Just the holding of the public hearing so that the public has the opportunity to share any feedback on the program.
Perhaps you or Zeke could say what this funding went to?
Oh, yes. This was a substantial funding to uh assist with the construction of ninety-four homes um off uh Kennedy Drive, uh of which a substantial portion were permanently affordable, um, many of which are well below the eighty percent threshold. So this is a substantial investment in permanent affordable housing in our community that this um Vermont Community Development Program Implementation Grant funded. And Zeke can provide any more details if you'd like.
Paul got that absolutely right. Nothing to add there.
Can, can I ask Zeke a couple of questions? How are things going with the buildings? Oh, wait.
Great. I mean, they were uh, they were full immediately. Um, there's always sort of a break-in period as new neighbors get used to each other, but uh, the community has been great. Um, the O'Brien Hillside development's been a, been a good neighborhood to be a part of and, and the buildings have, have been uh um good homes for a lot of people. We're, we're actually a year and uh, two months into occupying the first building and just about a year into full occupancy of the first building. So we've gone through a full budget cycle and, and appreciate all the work that the city council is, is done in, in working with uh this CDBG award, but also um with our tax assessment and everything that's been helping to preserve the, the affordability here and the success of this building.
Thank you. We're gonna open the public hearing now.
So I move to open a public hearing on the use of VCDP funds to develop ninety-four new mixed-income apartments in two separate forty-seven unit buildings located at four eighteen and four thirty-eight O'Brien Farm Road in South Burlington.
Second. Could you repeat that?
Aye, second motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we're now in public hearing for the Summit Development Project to hear public feedback. Please come down if you have your arm raised. Yeah, come right down to the podium or the desk. And um, make sure you push the button so you have a bright green light and you identify yourself.
Hi, um, I'm Jaclyn Druan. Is that it? And I'm on the screen. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. I came in specifically because I saw this um, the announcement that this was gonna be a discussion in the other paper. Um, and I think it's really great that there's a lot more affordable housing. Is there going to be, is that, is the, and I don't know if this is appropriate question now, is there gonna be additional funding of that type um in South Burlington?
So uh, this hearing is about public feedback for this particular project right now.
Okay.
Um, but uh, maybe when we come out of the public hearing, we can, we can talk about that. Would that be okay?
Yes.
All right, so just hold that thought. All right, so we're specifically talking about the two huge buildings that are up on the hillside with ninety-four units of affordable housing that uh, we acted as a, as a granting through a, through a, a funding process for grants that went to them. So, anybody else in the audience? Anybody online? I guess I can ask for a motion to close the public hearing then?
I move to close the public hearing on the use of VCDP funds to develop ninety-four new mixed-income apartments in two separate forty-seven uni- forty-seven unit buildings located at four eighteen and four thirty-eight O'Brien Farm Road in South Burlington.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, we're out of the public hearing now. So um, do you want to answer that question? Okay, so.
So this funding source is specifically um a grant program that's run by the state of Vermont that we, as well as all other municipalities and some other types of public sector entities have access to. So South Burlington has applied for this funding quite a few times and has had some success getting that. So I, and be, and part of this process tonight, doing this public hearing, is to demonstrate to the funders that we are a good investment as a municipality. So our hope is that we continue to use this funding source to fund our affordable housing goals. Um, the city of South Burlington also has its own housing trust fund um that we use from time to time to fund affordable housing projects as well. And then I guess thirdly, I would say on the affordable housing front, well, we have a housing commission or committee. Um, we also have inclusionary zoning that requires the public sector or the private sector to build affordable housing as it's as it's building market rate housing as well. So those are the kind of the things we are doing right now to ensure we're keeping up with our affordable housing development.
So I looked in and, so I looked into the grant in different cities who have received the grant in the past and how they've used the grant. And some of them have used it to do like outdoor parks and trials and then community centers. And I was wondering if, is the, is there, has there ever been any consideration of using the funds to make like facilities, like multi-generational facilities? I, I love the library here and the senior center. We've used it um for some of our events. But it is not necessarily central and accessible to a lot of people in South Burlington, and so having some diverse more like throughout the city spaces where people could have activities, um especially since a lot of the infrastructure is getting so old in South Burlington. So where young people can play, climate change is causing the fields to not be usable throughout the year. We were at a city council meeting at Orchard Elementary School this past summer, and we talked about the state of the fields um at Orchard Elementary School. And so they're actually like slanted, so it's really difficult for kids to play um just baseball. Um, so I, that was just basically it.
Do you want to thank him? Um, so you're absolutely right. This funding source can be used for other um community uh benefits as well. Um, I'd also encourage you to get in, involved with our Parks and Open Space Master Plan process that we're about to kick off. There'll be um publications and notices about that in the other paper and through City News and, and on our website in the, in the about month or so to come. Um, and it's trying to answer exactly that question of how we invest citywide in our um, community spaces for children and families and adults and seniors that are equitably distributed across the city.
Okay.
Yeah, please get involved. See Erica if you want more information. She's over there.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we close the hearing. We're done with item uh nine, and now we're gonna, with item ten, which is receive a briefing on the Dorset Street Shared Use Path Project and provide direction to staff with Erica Qualen, Deputy Director of Public Works for Capital Projects. Good evening, Erica.
Should it be a passcode, but if you need one, it is. You ready? Five zero three, three two six. All right. Good evening, everyone. Erica Qualen, Deputy Director of Capital Projects. Am I, do I have the capability of sharing now? I believe so. There you go. Oh, I did like it. It was just delayed. Okay, uh, so I am here tonight to present an update and an overview, kind of going through the history of the shared use path on Dorset Street that has been ongoing for quite a while, um, and council requested an update as we're in the right-of-way phase and have gotten some additional feedback. So, to just kind of orient you here, we're looking at the southern end of Dorset Street between Old Cross Road and Sadie Lane. The bigger green blobs on your left are that Memorial Park and uh Wheeler. To the south, that green one is Hubbard Park. Um, so those are, those are the big miles to uh markers there.
North is to the left.
Yes, that's an important part. North is not up. North is to the left.
Hopsies are really great sometimes.
Yeah, there was one, but I had to crop it to fit it, so it's gone. Um, and just to the right on here is the Shelburne Town Line. It's a little hard to see, but it's blue and purple. So this project, uh, that project area is point seven miles. It would be a ten-foot wide shared use path connecting two existing segments of path that are all on the east side of Dorset Street. Currently, we have a six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar grant from Vtrans, the State Agency of Transportation, and the match is being paid from uh the city's penny for paths and transportation impact fees. As it stands in the current uh capital improvement plan, construction is planned for FY twenty-six. So council had asked kind of how did we get to this point in the project? So I did some very deep digging to see when I could find this project. So in nineteen ninety-two was when the first big build-out of shared use paths in the city happened. There were three phases. Uh, there was a bond at the time. And a section that was built as part of phase two of that build-out was on Dorset Street from Swift Street to Old Cross Road where it uh currently stops. And in nineteen ninety-six, this was the oldest reference I could find. It was in the comprehensive plan as a planned shared use path on the east side of the road to connect the end of that path to the Shelburne Town Line. And then it just kind of hung out in the shadows for a while there. Uh, and so twenty years later, the project was identified by the Bike Ped Committee, and I went into a bit more detail about that in your memo. Uh, there was a series of community meetings and this was identified as the top priority project in the southeast quadrant at that time. So after that, in uh twenty seventeen, with a grant that was received, a scoping study was completed. It looked at a few areas in the city and identified a preferred alternative, which is the design we're looking at today, that ten-foot path on the east side of the road. In twenty nineteen, we were awarded that six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar grant, which would go towards design and construction. And so we've been going through design since then. And in twenty twenty-two, we entered the right-of-way phase, which is where we procure any land that is outside of the existing right-of-way, work with property owners to get that additional space uh for whatever is needed. In this case, it's primarily for grading and utilities. The path itself is within the right-of-way. This was just a shot I found. It was pretty cool. This was that map from nineteen ninety-six. You can see the line styles are really similar, but the dot dash is existing and the dot, 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 dash is proposed. Um, and so here, uh, I put that square where this project is.
I don't see my house.
There are a lot of houses and streets missing. It was uh fun to go back.
When did they build the section from Sadie Lane down to Dorset Farms? Do you know?
Oh, that's a good question. I feel like Paul or Tom should know that. I'm not sure exactly when. Between nineteen ninety-two and today is the best I can do. So how uh through a lot of those different steps, there have been public outreach opportunities in addition to today talking about where we're at. Um, so just a few here, in twenty fourteen, there was a resident-led survey from a group of residents who were really interested in moving this forward. Uh, and they conducted a lot of outreach locally through flyers and front porch forums. Actually found the original front porch forum posts when I was digging through um a lot of old files and Bike Ped Committee stuff. Like I mentioned, that twenty sixteen Bike Ped Committee outreach effort, there were four community meetings that were held. Um, one for each quadrant at that time. In addition to ongoing comments during the scoping study, the cover of which is here, there were two public meetings, both of which were held at the Planning Commission um and received the planning condition endorse, the planning commission endorsement for the alternatives. And then as project design was continuing, there was one last public forum in twenty twenty-one that uh was showing how the design was progressing. So within all of that, this is kind of the shorter term me of what we've been doing. So that study was completed in February of twenty seventeen, got the grant and then moved through the typical process uh that these projects require. So starting with the topographical survey, had surveys go out there, uh, moved right into conceptual design, which is roughly thirty percent. We received environmental clearance from the state that there were no adverse impacts to uh endangered species, historic properties, archaeologically sensitive, all sorts of different things that are required there. Preliminary or sixty percent design was completed in July of twenty twenty-one. And then the right-of-way began in July of twenty twenty-two, about one month after I started here. Uh, and so we've been in that phase since then. And uh, the remaining steps that would be needed to get to construction are to move through final plans, contract plans, and that's when it goes out to bid to construction. And so within the right-of-way, since that's where we're at right now, just to give you kind of an update on progress instead of seeing consent agenda lines here and there. Uh, so this is kind of how it has gone. We've uh this is primarily prop uh outreach we've done to the property owners. So letting them know this is getting started. Uh, some offer letters had gone out with the most recent ones being in October of this past year. Uh, and these are the dates you have accepted six uh easements since that right-of-way process has started. I think that's where I, yes. So the, the, we wanted to give you this high-level overview both to you all and to the community because we hadn't been in front of you to talk about it for a while comprehensively. Um, and then there is an executive session warrant for later in your agenda to talk about the real estate acquisition aspects of it. Um, but ultimately, your policy decision is um go or no-go. Do we keep pushing on this project or do we not? And then allocating funds, of course, to do it, although we have mu- much of the funds in place. So really, this is for your information, for the community's information, we're welcome. I think you should probably take public comment and then have your, hold your executive session later.
Um, I'll start the comment by saying that uh I was in a meeting with Kevin Dorrant where he pledged that if he knew how to run a backhoe, he would have started back in uh twenty seventeen, digging in the trench to start that process, but that was just a fantasy at that point. Um, uh, I, I live at the cider mill. Uh, I've witnessed um people walking on the east side of that road extensively and on the west side of the road, sometimes without regard for what the rules are, but whether you should face traffic when you're walking. There's not a lot of room for people uh to walk. Uh, there's also a squeeze down with three lanes right at the cider mill entrance. The people at the link uh road properties can't get access to the cider mill to get a creepie safely, right? Nor can the people that are down a little further across from Sadie Lane. It, it's just, it's a problematic area and it seems so logical that if you've got your connection all the way to Old Cross Road, you should go all the way to Sadie Lane. So I, I totally a hundred percent support this work because you've put so much into it. It's a great idea, so I'd like to.
Tim, I'm, I'm gonna have some questions, Colin, but can we hear from the public first?
Yeah.
Before we do that.
Anybody in the public want to comment? And I'd like to, you to keep your comments to two minutes, if you could, please. Come on down.
Thank you.
And just identify yourself, please, and make sure the light is green.
The light is green.
The light is green. My name is Al Moore. I live on Link Road. Thank you for your comprehensive update. I know this has been a topic that has been raised recently, last month. There's some discussion about this as well. Just want to add my perspective. Last month, one of our neighbors in the adjacent community spoke of safety as a primary concern considering this project. On that, I wholeheartedly agree. Pedestrian safety is of paramount importance and it is a growing issue in our community. I live on Link Road and right on that gap. And it is exactly for the safety reason that we should not further delay this project. Every day, people risk their lives to walk to the cider mill or to the existing Dorset Street bike path. To further delay this project is to further increase the likelihood of a tragic accident involving one of those pedestrians. While it is wise to consider all options. I worry any solution that requires bike path users to cross Dorset Street more times than is necessary would also. Likely increase the probability of an accident. My property is unimpacted by the project. I'm empathetic to those whose properties are. However, having access to a connected mixed use path was a factor in my decision or decision to move to this community. And this project was originally slated for completion in twenty twenty three. The path offers the potential to not only improve safety, but reduce automotive traffic, better connect our neighborhoods. And these benefits will extend community wide and help the city achieve its longer term vision. Unfortunately, with each passing season, the children in my neighborhood still cannot safely access surrounding neighborhoods, the city center. And schools by bike. And none of us can walk to existing paths without risking our lives or trespassing on neighboring properties. It is in all of our best interests to improve public safety and connect our communities while minimizing the number of times that folks would need to cross Dorset Street. I urge this committee to take action this year and build at least a portion of this urgently needed long delayed path. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak? Come up in, your choice, either podium or, yeah, just make sure you turn that light on to its green and identify yourself, please.
So my name is John Calcany. I first want to thank all of you for all your work that you do for the city and Erica as well for the work on this project. I'm also a resident who lives along the stretch of Dorset Street between Old Cross Road and Sadie Lane, where the gap exists. I live with my family.
Where, where do you live exactly?
I'm sorry?
Where do you live exactly?
Uh, Link Road.
Link Road.
Yep. And I live there with my family, three kids, two of which are here today. On our dead end street, Link Road off Dorset Street, there, there are actually six families with approximately fourteen kids who are middle school age or younger. So I'd like to think that I'm representing them as well as many of the other families in other neighborhoods. Such as like Dorset Farms, Cider Mill Development, Butler Farms, Pinnacle at Spear, South Village. And all those families that must venture out under Dorset Street to reach the cider mill market in Delhi. Were all families and children that find themselves on Dorset Streets for a variety of reasons. There are really three things that I want to comment on regarding the project, safety, funding, and an alternative location for the path. I've been involved in the project since it started in two thousand fourteen. Or actually before that, as Erica pointed out. I'm well aware of the thorough research, the traffic studies that have been done over the years. And this section along Dorset Street has been deemed most important or the highest need by the extensive work of the Bike and Ped Committee. Every so often, there are misconceptions that come arise. That a path already exists in this area connecting different neighborhoods, but it does not. My neighborhood is one of those that does not have access to the path and there are hundreds. I would say if not thousands of families that can't access the market in Delhi without putting themselves at risk of being on Dorset Street. There are countless students who do not bike or walk to school or even city center. Because there's not a direct path along Dorset Street. There's lots of data that shows how important the direct path in this area would be for residents in order to use it. I'm sure, I, we, there's the study from two thousand fourteen, but there's also data that the Bike and Ped Committee has as well. So this is a critical gap for many folks and puts many residents at great danger as pedestrians on Dorset Street. The second piece, I've heard and read about the potential amendment to Penny's for Pass. The article in the other paper on January tenth. I was glad to read that the council did not decide to put forth an amendment to this initiative that was started in two thousand eighteen. As a resident and taxpayer since the start of the levy, I would have been very disappointed and discouraged if funds were reallocated from their original designation. I hope the council does not undermine the work of the subcommittee, specifically the Bike and Ped Committee.
Your two minutes, just so you know.
Okay, sorry. And, and follows the guidance that they've put forth to finish this project. As we've seen, there's also the federal fund or grant, approximately six hundred fifty thousand dollars to complete it. And then, as Al pointed out, the alternative paths, you know, I trust the extensive work and money that's been put into the scoping study. Before and, you know, it's been deemed that the east side of Dorset Street is the best location. And I, I find it hard to believe that crossing Dorset Street twice would, would put residents in a better position to be safe. So I urge you not to postpone the project and move forward with plans as traffic increases on Dorset Street. It's really taken ten years to get to this point. And if the city, as the city continues to grow and traffic is increasing. Being a pedestrian on the stretch is extremely da- dangerous. My wishful thinking has me hoping that at a minimum, the northern section of the gap, Old Cross Road to at least the market in Delhi. Would be started this spring and summer, as we've been told in the past. But postponing any plans would minimize the time, money, and effort that people have put in over the past ten years. So please move forward with the project and keep our residents safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on down, Sandy. And you have two minutes.
Sandy Julie, forty four East Terrace, South Burlington. I don't live in the area, but certainly the presentation and all the work that's been involved. I've also heard anecdotally that walking or biking to get an ice cream cone in the summer. At the market is, is a very popular past time and this would make it more safe. So I would encourage you to go forward with it. The, the question I have is. I understand there are three property homeowners, three or four anyway. Who have not accepted whatever the right of way proposal is. What is the process for dealing with that situation? I mean, I'd like to know what, what the city has to do. I, I certainly hope it's something that can be done efficiently and, and the project can move forward. Promptly, if possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else? Come on down. Can you get close to the microphone and, and identify yourself?
My name is Amelia Chittenden.
Is the bright light on?
Uh, yes. It's green. Try it again.
It's, it's green. Just get a little closer to the mic.
Sorry.
You're doing great.
I actually just.
Get real close to the mic so we.
Sorry.
There we go. Perfect.
I live on Dorset Street, right next to the mill or next to the auto body shop. And I've seen parents with baby carriages. But they're walking in the road because they can't roll it on the grass or there's the ditch. So I'd be fully supportive of this project from my own personal experience. I also did not know about this meeting until five minutes ago, so I'm sorry about that. Not as prepared as some people. I don't know a lot about it, but I think it's really important because the amount of children that I know live in the neighborhoods but have to cross. And then go around like the golf course or whatever, what that path is called. But it's just, it's so much longer and most people don't do it. Most people just brave, walking by the woods or walking on the edge of the road. It's kind of crazy, but. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's else? Who's, who's next? Anybody online? Anybody have their hand up online? Kayla Moore, can you hear us? Did, did you want to speak?
Yes, if I could. I just like, I, I sent an email earlier today. I'd just like to read a portion of that to.
Sure, you have, you have two minutes.
The broader viewpoint, sure. I live in the Dorset Links neighborhood, which is a small neighborhood off of Dorset Street with a dead end street at the top. We currently have no safe way to access the existing multi-use path that currently stops at Old Cross Road. People of all ages in our neighborhood, including elderly people and children, risk their lives on a daily basis. Walking, running, or biking along the narrow shoulder of Dorset Street. We moved to this neighborhood in twenty twenty one. At that time, the path was slated to be completed in twenty twenty three. I followed up diligently with city staff to get updates every year. And every year since then, we are told it's been delayed another year, another year, that it's still in the right of way phase. One of the individuals who spoke against the path last month lived, lives in the property adjacent to our neighborhood. This property is set back from the street about two hundred yards and will be minimally impacted by the path. While I sympathize with them to some extent, I also believe the path offers benefits to all of us, including them. Living along a pedestrian path allows neighbors to connect with one another on a consistent basis. Pulls us out of isolation and enhances the quality of life for all. This is precisely why we love South Burlington. My son was five when we moved to this neighborhood. Now nine, he is an avid biker. His grandmother lives a mile down the road in One Direction, his soccer team practices at Veterans, and he has friends in the Cider Mill and Dorset Park. He is old enough to bike to all these places, if only the multi-use path were in place. Our neighbors across the street have elderly grandparents that live with them six months out of the year. Every day, sometimes twice a day, they go for a walk, risking their lives on the narrow shoulder of Dorset Street. My other neighbors at the end of Link Road have three children, all under seven. Every day, their father pushes a stroller across Dorset Street. With bikes and scooters piled on top to take them to the multi-use paths so they, so they can bike and scooter. It is not an exaggeration to say that every day the path is delayed, people's lives are at risk. The notion that we need to put this project on hold or move it to the other side of the street to make it safer or delay it further is simply absurd. The study and the planning have been done, the funding is in place, and the majority of the right of way phase has been completed. Please don't allow one or two households to draw this out any further. Please prioritize this project and get it completed as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kayla. Anybody else? Wait, hold on. Oh, Mr. Coda, Matt Coda. That name sounds familiar. Would you like to speak? Your hands up.
Yes, thank you Chair Barrett and City Council and, and thank you to all that support this path. As some of you may know, my son nearly lost his life on his bike, hit by a car going forty miles an hour. He was fine. He recovered thanks to quick work by South Burlington Paramedics and Fire Department. And the community that rallied to his support. This path is needed. Please build it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I was gonna mention that later if you didn't. Nobody else online? Mr. Doyle, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Ryan Doyle. I, I know you guys are all gonna support this, all of you. This just fits so well into everything. That we have pushed for in the city plan. This has been, we saw, was that nineteen ninety six, Erica? That was, it's almost three decades ago. It's a long time to wait for infrastructure. So I know that I don't have to plead with you. I have to plead with some, some community members. And I implore them to work with you so that we can provide infrastructure that is safe. For our children in our community. I know that that area is much more developed than it was when they moved in. But times do change and safety is our number one priority. So I hope that they will come to the table with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else? Last chance. Oh, Mr. Chittenden? Chittenden, excuse me. Could you identify yourself?
Just, Tom Chittenden. I own a property that is part of this on Dorset Street. And I believe I've signed all the easements and I've just speaking up to fully support this. And I want to say two things. One, I grew up on that property and when I was twelve, I got hit by a car, but I was fine. So, yeah, yeah, everything's fine. And the other thing I want to say is raising my kids there for the last thirteen years, the most dangerous thing we did was walk on Dorset Street. So I just really hope this does happen and I, I know it's a complicated process and you're gonna talk in executive session. But just know that there's a lot of people that really support this and that mill is a pedestrian magnet. So it just draws people down these dangerous stretches. So it really is necessary now with all the development in that area. And thank you all for everything you do, for all the work and being here on a late Monday night.
And we thank you for your signature. All right. Anybody else? So I think we're done with public comment and we're gonna have a, an executive session of this at the end of the meeting. Where we can talk about some easement issues. But, I mean, like I said, I fully support this. Does the council want to chime in?
Yeah, so I, I just want the public to know that the reason why this is delayed and it's been alluded to is that. The utility poles have to be moved, the swale has to be moved. Because of that, the city doesn't have a right of way for, for those things to happen. And the folks whose property that will impact, some of those folks. We're not willing to move forward in a cooperative way. So tha- that's why it's not happened yet, right? Not because the council wants to defer it, right? That's, that's kind of where we are, so that has to be resolved. I have a couple of questions for Eric and I just want to make one more comment. I, I'm not at all gonna question the placement of this path where it is. I would say that, you know, if we were drawing, writing on a complete blank slate, there is a question in my mind as to. Where the placement of the path would do the greatest good for the greatest number of people, because you still have all those people on Dorset Farms. Who will have to cross a busy Dorset Street to get to this path. At, you know, a point that's not an intersection, there's no light, whereas the people inside a mill could in theory go through Dorset Heights. To Old Cross Road and that existing bike path. So like, on a complete blank slate, it's not clear to me where the greatest good would be. If we had to like redraw and place this path. So I, I just want to say that. It's not, I think it's not entirely obvious, right? Where, where it actually should be, at least to me. Two things I, I wanted to ask, which is, you know, when you, when you go through that area on Dorset Street. The utility poles kind of like cross over just south of where we want to put the path. And then they continue on the, on the east. And then they cross back over right in the corner by John Wilking's property. And I get the, I gather the plan is to then move those, keep those utility poles on the same side, but move them further east, which requires the easement. And one question, have we thought about making more sense of those utility poles? And just relocating them all to our right of way on the west? And then freeing up all that space while we're gonna be moving them anyway? So that, that's one question I have.
I apologize. I'm not looking at you. I'm pulling up partial views to see where, how wide our right of way is. If it would be able to fit within the right of way on the other side. I, I will say that the path is fitting within the right of way. So like you said, the utilities and the swale are the bigger concern in terms of, or the bigger need. And driver of requiring easements. If the, even, even if the poles moved to the other side of the road and could fit within the right of way. We would still be needing similarly sized easements for stormwater throughout this area. The current swale that's there is where the path would go.
I have a question about that too, but yeah.
And so the swale is going on the back of the path as currently designed. And there are some areas of stormwater treatment that are also along the.
So I mean, that's, the other question I had about the swale, because the, the, you know, I gather the plan is. And again, Eric, I know, I know this has been worked out for so long, so, so I'm sure there's really good engineering reasons for why it's designed like it is. But when I, when I look at that swale, and I think, boy, wouldn't it like be much safer? To put the path to the east of the swale and, and then not have to move the swale. Have incremental buffer between the folks on the path on the road instead of moving the swale. And then having like a fairly narrow buffer between the path and the road. So what's, what's the thinking about moving the swale?
Yeah, absolutely. And so through a lot of the path and as, through as much of the design as we could. We tried to maintain at least a five foot grass buffer. A lot of times it's upwards of seven feet. Between the edge of the road and the start of the path. And so that wouldn't be enough of, enough width to get the. Capture all of the drainage that would be, all the water that would be draining to that area. So the path would have to come further to the east. And that, I mean, that is an option that could have.
Again, but if we just were to leave the existing swale in place and build the path to the east. Again, but if we just were to leave the existing swell in place and build the path to the east, um, that would save relocating the swell. It would improve the margin between the road and the path. So just help me understand why that's not, why that doesn't make sense, I guess.
So, I see Tom getting up.
So Tom can come down. I would say, you know, if, if you want us to redesign this project, we can.
I, 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 I would just.
I don't wanna make her redesign on the fly.
I'm not asking that, Jesse, and we could talk about this at a later time. I, I, I'm just, I'm, um, articulating some questions that came to my mind, Lori and I went, you know, to Sarah, Lori, but that just seemed like obvious questions to ask about the design.
Can I jump in for a quick se- second? I just wanna say, I wanna see this thing move forward. I wanna see it move forward quickly. And so what Andrew has talked about, I think might be great ideas, but I don't wanna slow the project down. At the same time, if relocate or keeping the swell and separating the bike to the east, the path to the east were feasible and doable within reasonable, because we're at sixty percent, not ninety percent yet, it could improve the safety and improve, improve, improve the comfort of the walkers if they have a swale between them and the road. But there may be reasons it can't happen, and this was just something when we walked it, it was like, oh, being here, we didn't know if this had been thought about, so that's why you brought it up.
For, uh, Tom DiPietro, Public Works Director. Um, I just wanted to note that whenever you create impervious surface, you have to get a state stormwater permit. We also have local, local rules related to stormwater. So it's not just having a drainage ditch or a swale. It's also you have to provide treatment. So part of this is taking that existing water, uh, taking the additional stormwater runoff that'll be generated by a ten-foot path over this point-seven mile distance and providing appropriate treatment. So we need space for that as well. So, and to Jesse's point, if council would like us to go back and redesign some of this, that can be a council decision. That would certainly take a little bit more time, uh, to go back and look again.
I'm not personally asking for redesign. It just would be helpful to me to understand the thought process behind the design that we have as to why the utility poles are not relocated on the side and why the path is not to the east of the swell. Um, it, you know, and if that's, if there are not good answers to that now, that's fine, but it just seemed like obvious questions to ask.
I'll just say, I, I, so like I mentioned, I joined a month before the right-of-way phase started. And so I'm not sure about when those design decisions were made. I'll say that at the point we're at, um, all of the easement types would also be changing, and I'm not sure about space on the other side of the road. So it would be, um, if that was the direction that council chose to go, um, it would, yeah. We would have to do a lot of redesign and start the right-of-way process over with a new set of easements and deeds there. So, but I, I can't provide an answer as to when, uh, or the conversations that went on with those design decisions.
So let me ask this question. You, you don't need a motion by the, the council for this. I mean, I support the way it is. I don't know how Elizabeth feels.
Can I just clarify how many, uh, properties affected, how many easements are needed?
This is why I ran out to go upstairs and put this out and pick it up. Um, so there are, I wanna make sure I got the numbers right. There are thirteen properties that were along this. Um, easements were needed from twelve of the properties. One of the properties, there were already, um, easements from when that development was built. Originally, we needed some. We managed to design that out of the project. So there were, um, twelve properties with easements that were needed, and council has accepted six of them, all of which have been recorded.
So you have six left?
Correct.
And we're gonna talk about three tonight or two tonight in executive session?
Uh, we're not gonna talk in open session about what we're gonna.
No, okay. But, but it's, it's on, it's on the agenda to talk about this item, and I was just curious how many of those easements were in play. So, and, and what, where are you when the other six? What progress have you made?
That, I think we should leave that for executive session.
Okay, we can wait for that too. But you just, you have six.
Ongoing.
Well, you, have you submitted six to, to six people, six, six landowners, and they're not signed? Is that what you're saying?
All property owners got their offer letters at the same time. They were sent out at the same, at the same time.
Stayed all, okay, thank you. So, Mike, I don't know how you feel.
Um, I live on, uh, behind Veterans Memorial, and my son has friends up on Midland. And we've driven that lane a few times, and even though I pointed out there is another longer, sort of corrugated route. Uh, and I asked him, if I let you go by yourself, will you take that longer route? And he looks at me and says, I'll try. And I, I think that basically just is, the, the route is there, people will start on that route, and they'll just continue on that lane. And so I think it is truly a public safety issue. Uh, I, uh, no one likes to have perhaps encroachment on their land. But in this particular case, this has been out there for quite a long time. Uh, there've been many opportunities to reach as it is. I trust that the expertise that has gone into it has been solid and sound. And, uh, and this also is about, I think, we're, we're gonna talk about the active transportation plan. This is also about really coming to closure in our city and having integrated networks. This is fundamental to the vision we have for our community. And if we want to continue to maintain support and strength for prioritizing this in very, very tight budget, uh, period, I think we need to have closure on some of these groups, uh, these, uh, routes and have this interconnectivity. So, uh, I strongly support it for many of the reasons that were expressed here today.
So, we're gonna have an opportunity to talk about some items during the executive session, so why don't we just hold off and wait on that? I appreciate your concerns, but if the design work is done, I want this train to keep going. Personally, as a counselor, right, and for the community and for the residents on Dorset Street that have no access between Old Cross Road and City Lane to get to the mill, to get to the school. I personally have watched two middle schoolers bike along Dorset Street from Dorset Farms along that section, because they didn't wanna deviate, because they were kinda late for class, and then they got on the path later on. It's dangerous, especially with commuters going as fast as they can legally to get to work. So everybody's got something where they wanna go in the morning, so. So, if that's it, we're gonna.
It may be that if we did think about moving the utility pole to the other side, it'd be easier to get the easements, and this would actually be done faster, because it just seems like a smarter way to do it. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item eleven, which is, uh, receive a presentation on the active transportation plan. Oh, you're gonna stay. But we're also looking for Drew.
Yeah, I missed your Jinger's up.
Is it, is it?
Um, I can just pull it up here.
Is it Jinger's or, or Gingras?
Yep, Gingras.
Gingras, thank you.
I will give some background and kill a couple of seconds. Alright, I am still Erica Wallen. I am still your Deputy Director of Capital Projects. Uh, so, uh, now I am here to talk about the active transportation plan, which has been going on for the last fifteen, sixteen-ish, uh, months. It's been a very, uh, active, no pun intended, effort. Uh, and we have some folks from our project team that are here. Drew, get close. We can do some introductions on me, uh, as we get started. But so tonight, the real purpose of us being here is to provide you an update on our draft plan. So this is the, we're, we think we're really close. Uh, we've been incorporating feedback throughout. And so we are here to present the process that we went through to get to this point. Oh, is it up? In this meeting's one?
Nope, just, uh, keep going back. To documents.
It's not letting me go back. So while this is loading. Uh, so this is to present our draft plan, going through our, uh, process of getting to this point, the different outreach mechanisms we used, what we heard, and, um, where we have arrived in terms of the prioritized project list, and also our programs and policy recommendations. Do you wanna just join us? Oh, there we go. Alright, we're good. Eliana is here.
Nope, I was just, when I do introductions.
Okay, I swear it's loading. I'm sorry. Alright, here we go. So, this is kind of what I was getting at. Uh, so these are a lot of the things, this is all of what we will be going over today. The project team, many of whom are here today. I have introduced myself. I am Erica Wallen. Also from the city, we had Nick Atherton, who is here now from, uh, representing planning and zoning, and Adam Math from Recreation and Parks, who both, uh, contributed a lot to this project from VHB, our consulting team.
Uh, yes, my name is Drew Jinger. So I'm the project manager representing VHB, and I'm joined online by Elizabeth Sundberg.
And from the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, the CCRBC, who was, uh, the primary funder of this project. This came through their Unified Planning Work Program, their annual work program. This was funded through that, and Brian Davis led the project from there. He could not join us tonight. Um, and Marshall Distel, and we have Eliana Fox here with us, who is a planner with the RPC. So this project came from a lot of different efforts. One of the most recent is the Climate Action Plan and the Climate Action Implementation Plan. Uh, this has also been recommended through the city plan, individual studies. Um, and we've been doing a lot of different work to get us to this point, but haven't necessarily taken the whole citywide holistic approach, which is what the real goal was here. Uh, in the Climate Action Implementation Plan, which is what that graphic is from below, the bigger the circle was the projection of greenhouse gas emissions benefit. And then the axis, the horizontal is complexity, and, uh, vertical is the estimated cost. And the one that is circled in orange there is, uh, where this project was ranked. And just note there, the cost was because of all of the projects that will come out of it. Uh, so I think it should be probably even higher on that cost. So we've talked a lot about this project, and I've gotten a lot of questions from counselors and members of the public, uh, about what this is and maybe what it's not. So I just wanted to make sure we're all kind of approaching this conversation from the same place. And so the plan is looking at our overall network, uh, and looking at the types of gaps and how they can be closed, which is what Drew will really bring us through. But this is, the key here is to think about that we're looking at the overall larger-scale primary network of our city, and not every smaller gap, uh, which is something that we are using other tools to do. And so what will you have for you out of this? Plan is prioritized recommendations for that overall transportation network, as well as a suite of policy and programmatic recommendations. And another piece, uh, that I think we'll be using a lot moving forward is a toolkit for future project development that we can look at. We might know the context of an area and say, what should we be doing here? And this toolkit can really help. So, just as important as what, of what it is, what it's not is this isn't a maintenance plan. This is something, we're building that out, out through other tools, like I said. But this isn't, um, intended to set a schedule of when sidewalks or shared use paths are being replaced, things like that. Um, and the neighborhood scale route plan. So, like I said, this is really focusing on our primary spines to create that connected network and not necessarily all of the, uh, door, doorstep to, uh, whatever their destination is, but not looking at every little piece. And so this is also not a comprehensive project list. We have a lot of other efforts going on. So a lot of what's coming out of this is going to be our larger capital projects that we'll be planning for as we move into the future. I'm gonna turn it over to Drew.
Alright, thank you, Erica, and thank you, members of the council, um, for joining us this evening and listening to what we have to tell you about our active transportation plan. So I'm gonna keep things fairly high level. I have about fifteen slides to get through, what I'd really like to save time for is questions from you all. I recognize a few of you from some of our public engagement. So hopefully this is not brand new, and, um, I believe we provided the full plan and executive summary in advance of this. But I'm hoping to bring some clarity to, uh, that plan. I understand it is, you know, it is quite verbose, it's quite detailed. Um, but hoping to answer any questions you have and get through this, uh, a brief presentation in the meantime. So, here's just a quick overview of the project schedule. We, uh, kick things off, uh, November of the year prior last, and today we find ourselves presenting to you and, uh, hoping to submit this final active transportation plan later this month. It's been a very, um, involved process. We've had incredible engagement throughout via a number of tools. Uh, while I see the list of advisory group meetings on the screen, I also wanna thank our advisory group for this effort. I thought we had a very, um, invested group of residents, of folks from the accessibility challenged community, from Local Motion. I thought our advisory group really shepherded this project, uh, and the development of this plan through very well, and, um, informed it all the better. So, um, in addition to the project schedule, I always like to give a quick overview of the project's go-forward work, kind of what we did to get where we are now. Um, so we started with a just general existing conditions assessment, and this included for the most part an inventory of the city's active transportation facilities, which I must say, in their current state are quite impressive, um, in terms of build-out. But as we've heard, as we've heard earlier tonight during when I walked in, you know, there are, there are gaps. And so the intent of this plan is to identify those gaps, um, both in the literal and figurative sense, and build out a plan, uh, to address those gaps. And sometimes those gaps are literal in terms of, we need a path here. Sometimes they are literal in the sense of a quality gap, where you might have a deficient facility relative to what you should have there. You know, we hear a lot, nobody uses those bike lanes. Well, if the bike lanes are on Route Two and the cars are going fifty-five and a forty, and there's ten thousand of them a day, it's not gonna be a very appealing bike lane to use. So, a part of this plan also looks at rightsizing our active transportation infrastructure to actually make sure that it is going to be desirable and usable. Um, beyond that, once we kind of developed our project list through a gap analysis, we worked, um, pretty regularly with our advisory committee and, and regularly brought forward to the public the criteria for evaluating the projects that we were, uh, coming up with from our gap analysis. We then prioritize those. In addition to infrastructure projects, we also wanted to engage the community members and advisory group, as well as our project team, about program and policy recommendations. So it's very easy to see the network when it's built out, but what's happening behind the scenes? Are we educating folks about the benefits of active transportation in terms of health and community connectivity? Are we teaching safe bicycling and safe travel as a pedestrian and, uh, vice versa? Recognizing locations where there are gonna be pedestrian and bicyclist volumes when you are learning, um, how to drive and taking your driver's education courses, you know, do we have the right things in the right places? So what you see in this plan is a comprehensive, um, summary and explanation of all that this advisory group and your, um, residents and community members think needs to happen in the city regarding active transportation. So it's just a quick overview of our public engagement. Um, our primary tools were significant public meetings, as well as a couple pop-up events here and there, taking advantage of other city events when we could. Um, and then beyond that, we had an extremely successful, um, survey. So in addition to our, uh, public meeting calendar that you see here, we also had an online survey that asked, um, survey takers several questions and provided a mapping, uh, tool where folks could list the location where they needed to, or wanted to see improvements. And so what you see on the screen here is, uh, you know, as we expected, this community is very engaged, and we saw that by the sheer volume. And so what you see on the screen here is uh, you know, as we expected, this community is very engaged, and we saw that by the sheer volume of people that took our survey. Think that's also a credit to um, community members spreading the word, um, the energy around the desire for improved active transportation. The map graphic on the right here is what's called a heat map, and it represents kind of where we heard the most input. So you can see a couple of those burning yellow and orange locations that were very popular, obviously a lot of energy along the city's north and south arterials, um, Dorset, Spear, uh, Heinsburg Road, one sixteen there, and of course, Shelburne Road. That, some of the um, heat, if you will, is blocked out by the Burlington border, but there was plenty along uh, US seven and Shelburne Road uh, in the northwest quadrant of the city. Um, and so we found this to be an extremely helpful tool for those as well, who are not necessarily able to make our public engagements. You know, I myself in the father room, a one-year-old and a three-year-old, and I can't always get out, but I just saw there was a study for a shared use path along US Route Two right next to my house, and boy, did I jump all, all over that. So I think we're seeing, the more we can create ways for folks to engage, the more willing folks are to engage. Um, so, one of the kind of first steps in our process uh, of project prioritization was determining how we were going to evaluate projects. I mean, so we came up with these six criteria, and you can see the explanatory narrative on the left side here. Um, these were built from the visions and goals that were as determined for the project by our project team and advisory group, uh, further informed by community engagement. Um, we presented these criteria at two separate uh, advisory group meetings and let our group kind of inform us how these should be weighted, we then took that input to the public and sought their uh, input on the criteria as well, what is the most important? We saw that kind of left, uh, left down and right down in terms of what folks thought was the most important, safety and connectivity rang supreme, I think that was reflected in the previous agenda item this evening with Dorset Street. We certainly saw that reflected in our uh, plan and in our community engagement in particular. So beyond that, uh, beyond just setting the criteria, we also needed to assign weighting to those criteria. And here you can see that on the screen, the, the maximum score provided for each category uh, on the right side there, totaling one hundred and thirty um, points for a scoring of each project. We will get into, I'm not gonna dive deep into the project list, it is um, comprehensive in the document describing every project and every score that that project received. My intention is to go a little bit over our process and then kind of the top five highlights uh, from each categorized list of projects that we developed. Um, so just to come up with that project development uh, list, I wanted to explain a little bit of the process. This started out with a, a gap analysis in GIS, for those that might not be familiar, means geographic information systems, fancy acronym for map. Um, so we used the extensive library of maps that the city had, uh, and we combined that with the state's database for what we were able to um, find within the city of South Burlington, fortunately, uh, Chittenden County for, via the RPC as well, is uh, an extremely well-mapped county and, and very informed, uh, allowed us to have, make very informed decisions as we built out this network. Um, the city's mapping as well, and inventory of their existing infrastructure and resources was second to none. And so, what we used uh, via all of that mapping inventory was to develop the existing conditions map seen on the right side here, as well as the planned projects that the city has, kind of in the hopper, so to speak. We further informed, developing this project list with advisory group input, of course, public engagement, and then a review of past plans and studies. We really wanted this plan to be, as of the date that it is submitted, a one-stop shop to see every project that is currently either planned, um, in progress, designed, um, in the right-of-way process, what have you. This plan represents a comprehensive inventory of everything that the city has done relative to active transportation over the last, I believe, ten, fifteen years. Um, so throughout that whole process, uh, we identified sixty-four infrastructure projects. We split those into three buckets, being corridor, intersection, and crossing. Um, corridor, uh, somewhat self-explanatory, has an A and a B, and is a project that connects those two points. Intersection is firmly considered to be a three-way or four-way intersection, signalized or unsignalized, that presents a bit of a barricade or a hurdle for folks. And then a crossing project is, could exist at an intersection, we did our best to combine where that was the case, but might otherwise be a point of a desired crossing that currently doesn't exist to connect to facilities or destinations, or a desire to improve an existing uh, crossing via the toolkit that uh, Erica mentioned, that's included in the end of the, at the end of the plan. So just a, a quick high-level look at how we scored the, these projects. This is a somewhat busy map on the right side, but I think it um, provides an in-depth look at just the level of detail that we went to as a project team to really make sure that this uh, scoring was as objective as possible while combining what we heard from our community members, understanding that what is really occurring on the ground may not be reflected in data, but really using data to derive the bulk of the decision-making. So you can see here on the right side, this is a crash history map combined with our draft project list. And so how we determine scoring, it was summarized in smaller text on a previous slide, what was basically in regard to safety, it was looking at proximity to a high crash location, number of crashes along a corridor, if it was a corridor uh, project, whether or not there was a crash involving a vulnerable user, um, especially a fatality, um, these things are serious, it, it, it just takes one to, to truly make a difference and for, for a facility or a corridor to feel not safe or not comfortable for a variety of users. So this is kind of a high-level review, we did a similar exercise when we were looking at origins and destinations uh, relative to the evaluation criteria for connectivity, making sure we were prioritizing facilities that were gonna connect folks from uh, high resi- highly residential areas to things like grocery stores, schools, public amenities, services, et cetera. So this is just, I kind of wanted to give a high-level look before I just dove right into the um, kind of project scoring. But after all of that, pardon me, we uh, developed a prioritized list, again, split into those three buckets. The map on the right, the darker the blue, the higher the priority for a project, the lighter the blue, the lower. Um, what you see on the left here are kind of the top five highlighted projects from that prioritization uh, in the corridor category. And so this again, represents just a, a, a smattering of what we're seeing. But, you know, exit fourteen, east-west project, White Street Bike Lanes, Heinsburg Road, Williston Road, Streetscape, Shelburne Road, Shared Use Path. The other thing that's worth noting is all of these projects, uh, for the most part are at different phases. They could be ideas, they could be in right-of-way, they could be going out to bid soon. Um, and so what we've also included in the plan at the end of it is what we're referring to as an implementation plan, which is basically a critical path look at each and every single project identified in the plan, and an explanation of the next step, the responsible party, and if uh, funding is needed, um, viable funding opportunities to fund that project. So, in addition to the corridors, obviously, um, a corridor is not a corridor without intersections, so we looked at the top five uh, and highlighted the top five intersection uh, improvement projects here through our plan. Not, probably none of these will surprise you, um, in terms of the, at least one or both of the roadways in there. Williston Road appears in three of these, Dorset Street in the other, and Shelburne Road in the other. Um, that is reflected throughout the plan as well. Um, and last but not least, we have crossing projects, um, some of these again, highlighted in past studies. We are now basically amplifying them in this, um, saying, here's what you need to do if they've already been studied, the next step is this. Uh, and again, similar to the intersection projects, the usual suspects, if you will, Dorset Street, Shelburne Road, Williston Road, Heinsburg Road, all within the top five projects, and of course, there's a slew of projects below each of these top five highlights for every category. Um, but with that, I wanted to kind of conclude with a, a high-level look at the existing network versus the proposed network. Um, and what you're seeing on the right is with the thicker lines is the built-out network as kind of proposed, so to speak, in the plan. Um, and then the existing network, which again, is, is very impressive, um, on the left side there. So that was kind of the conclusions um, from the infrastructure piece. Beyond that, of course, I'd mentioned that at a high level, we developed a list of program and policy recommendations too, and those, these fit into the, what are called the six Es of planning, education, engineering, encouragement, equity, evaluation, um, and engineering policy. We've also added a couple others relative to safety and funding priorities. That involves um, the city's Penny for Paths program, and then some larger scale uh, programs and policies that have had national success. You know, i.e. complete streets, quick-build projects, traffic calming measures, et cetera. Uh, as Erica mentioned too, we just wanted to share at a high level what else is in the plan, this design treatment toolkit really takes a look at, if you are going to implement all of these pedestrian and all of these bicyclist improvements, what is it going to take? And this is kind of a, just a bulleted list, the plan goes into much more detail about what each of these kind of, where they fit, how they work, what they are. Um, and so that's a list of the bike uh, options, and then pedestrian facilities as well, some of these things you're likely to be familiar with. Um, but if, if you're not, that's what they're looking like there. And then um, last but not least, I touched on that implementation plan and kind of the level of detail that we uh, included within that, we identified a term length, a planning level cost estimate, and then funding opportunities for each and every project listed in the plan. And then last here was just kind of a look again at our, our top ten projects. This is the format of the table within the implementation plan. So you can see how it's split up into the project name, what it is, what type of project it is, the timeframe, next steps, the estimate, and funding options. So with that, uh, our next steps for this plan, and hopefully receive um, your support, endorsement from council this evening, and then any further comments that we receive through review process, we will incorporate and finalize the plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, um, that was a lot of work, and I really appreciate um, all of the information that was gathered and how it was uh, packaged up for us, um, is really useful, and um, I think it's gonna serve its purpose and direct us for a long time uh, on projects that, that need to be done. Uh, were there any big surprises that you didn't anticipate with what you came up with? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure there were, um, like Drew mentioned, the uh, the, the usual suspects kept coming up. We often refer to them, Public Works, as the big three of Dorset, Williston, and Kennedy, and that area. Uh, some of what surprised me was in terms of the public input. There were a lot of places that I have heard about a lot, um, pretty frequently, and other places that are objectively, or at least like my professionally objectively uh, deficient or needing attention. But there were a few areas that I was surprised at just how prominent public uh, input was. The big one was the Spear Street connection, uh, that uh, has been ongoing, connecting uh, the path on Swift Street to the existing path by the UVM Forestry Building. Uh, Drew, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was the number one project, uh, where someone dropped a pin, was in that area. And so that surprised me, I'll say that that was the one.
Did the little strip of land in back of the gas station and the Barton Burger King off Shelburne Road that doesn't have a sidewalk, did that ever come into your vision? It's a single block, north and south, between the Hannaford and Hannaford Way.
That is one, I remember discussing that one.
Okay. There's, there's no pedestrian access, it's very narrow, it's just two cars, and yeah, so, this, but this process points all that out, especially when you have a lot of public input, so I appreciate that. Um, and it's really sad looking for, at, at the red circles wi- with the bicyclists or with the pedestrians, and, and we know we've had some tragedies on Shelburne Road and also on Heinsburg Road. Uh, and so we, it's imperative that we work towards trying to reduce those types of problems in the future, so. So the recommendation is a bike path on the east side of Shelburne Road from Imperial to Swift, right?
That was included in the project list because it's one that's listed in the CIP, but Shelburne Road as a whole was one of the highest priorities, as well as Heinsburg Road. And from the right sizing that Drew was talking about, a separated facility is really what's appropriate in that area, whether that is directly along the road or kind of connecting neighborhood, similar to what is um, in the works along Spear Street, of this kind of awful alignment, but connecting the key pieces. That is something that we want to dive in deeper in terms of the actual uh, location that each piece falls into in the part two of the active transportation plan, but really because of that speed, the history of the crashes, the pure volume of vehicles, so the type of facility was recommended here. Um, and just knowing that those two arterials need additional attention.
Does Vtrans have a hu- much bigger responsibility for some than the city, or is it a shared process, or?
Um, it can be driven by either party, um, in the way that we've taken the lead on some projects that are in a Vtrans right-of-way. Things within the curb line are very much Vtrans, and much less uh, likely for us to be able to do something. Outside of the curb line is a bit more um, uh, col- not, collaborative makes it seem like it's not between, but there's more uh, uh, more sway from us, uh, and things outside of the curb line, but it is still the state right-of-way. So uh, that makes it difficult, we wouldn't necessarily lead a project and go through the right-of-way through there.
Comments from the council?
So, uh, incredibly um, comprehensive report, and the process that you went through sounds incredibly comprehensive. Um, given that, just a question, so there's sixty-four projects on the back in table ten. Um, is there an opportunity to further update that at this point? And the, the reason I'm asking is that it, it just, I guess it strikes me because there are sixty-four projects. Um, if the project is not in that list, it's probably not gonna get too much attention, because we've got sixty-four that are prioritized. And the, the Safe Roots School, School Task Force um, came to us and said um, a sidewalk along Richard Terrace was like their number one um, project that they heard from the Chamber of School, and I don't, I don't see it on this list, and um, maybe because the folks in the neighborhood didn't respond to the survey, or for whatever reason. So, um, I would love to see really just that single project um, put into this prioritization hopper, hopper, and, and, and see where it comes out so that it, it doesn't get lost. Technologically, I understand it's not comprehensive, this list, but sixty-four projects are already a, a lot of projects, and so if, if something's not there, it's, it's probably gonna be below the um, below the horizon a bit.
I'm not sure about adding projects, I think I would defer to Drew a bit on that one, uh, but there are uh, the, so the Active Transportation Plan Part Two, um, will look at some more of those neighborhood level connections and that, because of those.
Is that what you consider, that you consider that Richard Terrace piece a neighborhood level connection, and that's why it's not maybe something that would be part of this, is that?
To, uh, in some ways, yes, and also in terms of the type of analysis done here was looking at, because it was looking at some of those larger scale things, um, and we continue to get requests through our traffic evaluation requests, Safe Roots to School. I think we're in the process of finding ways to incorporate those into additional places, because we, we do have a lot of different ways in which a project can come to be.
Yeah, that's fine, I guess, I mean, there are some items um, strikes me in the sixty-four that are probably shorter than the Richard Terrace piece, and I don't know if that's a definitive way of defining what's neighborhood level and what's large scale, but I guess so, maybe there's some ambiguity, but if, if that one piece would be part of the second study, then that's, that's uh, fine for me.
Yeah, understood, yeah, if, we have a lot of ongoing efforts, so yeah, um, I'll chew on that and see where, um, yeah.
Um, Erica, when you're, I, I noticed a lot of projects are, have more than one or two dollar signs on them. Um, when those projects come forward, because we had this conversation about funding through pennies for paths, is there a component of the project that would include ongoing maintenance needs?
Uh, Drew, please correct me if I'm wrong here, the planning level cost estimates shown in the implementation plan do not reflect the maintenance needs uh, moving forward. In the program and policy recommendations, I believe there's some mention of building out different maintenance programs. Mention of building out different maintenance programs. And I see Drew turn on his mic, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Yeah, the planning level cost estimates were really for kind of. Relative to where the project was at through conclusion of construction. So they didn't think about forward thinking. Anything frankly is just as an engineer estimating costs, doing anything beyond the year you are currently trying to do it. Is a very, very difficult task. For example, if somebody estimated something in twenty twenty and it was bid in twenty twenty one. That bid probably would have been sixty percent of what over a hundred and sixty percent of what it was estimated at. So what we're doing here is taking. A very informed, but for all intents and purposes, best guess at the increase in cost materials. Lord knows the weeks, the events of the last week will affect that as well and what we start to see for cost, but. It it would be very difficult to estimate maintenance costs into the future beyond. Does the city have the equipment that's needed to do it at this time?
Other council questions?
Yes, I think I have a deep upset. It's almost overwhelming how detailed and. And comprehensive it is. But to sort of bring it down to a more digestible level, at least what you said for me. What really resonated with me when you use the word desirable and usable. And as I understand it, the goal here is 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 to help. Create the dynamic in our our city where people opt to use the pedestrian and and bikes. An enthusiastic bicyclist will always find a way to ride wherever they are. A committed walker will find a way to do it and especially if the focus is on exercise. But as I see what we're talking here, it's about. Making then the second part about this, which I liked is destination emphasizing. That the whole purpose of this is to say you can go to that destination. And not have to get into your car. It's good. It's healthy. It's optional. It's wonderful. And I and and you didn't mention it, but I saw it on the list, also emphasizing connection to a public transit. And what I've seen in many European cities is the seamless movement between different modes of transit. So I really commend you for for. That design and and putting in those targets. The one thing I would just urge you to do is as we roll this out is perhaps package it a little bit different. Because I'm looking this, it really is overwhelming. It's almost you sort of go, I I can navigate this and maybe unless you're an engineer or or something else. One, one, one idea that jumped to mind, just because I've seen it in other towns is saying. With the completion of this, if you live in neighborhood X, you can get to Y. So yeah, this, this, this. Piece, this gap will connect neighborhood X to city center, you know, small, whatever, just. I think to because the goal is also. As I think Elizabeth said, there are dollar tags attached to this and part of it is to create enthusiasm in our tight budgets to to do it. But again, very, very well done and and the whole principle I applaud.
Thanks, Mike. Lori, any comment? Figuring out how to, I think, I'll just piggyback a little bit on on what Mike said. The maps are still a little indigestible to me. And it would be, I I know that. Within. The scoping that you've done through some sections that are very small. And relatively inexpensive that create a link. That's not there versus these bigger pieces that may be more important. But we don't have the funds for. And. I would love to. And I'm not sure if it's. You've got the map that's the. Existing and proposed. But I don't see really. What it's going to look like this year, next year and year five. So that. As a cyclist or a walker, I can see I'll actually get from Shelburne Road to city center. On a continuous path. In five years or in two years, et cetera. So. There's some notion of how this is going to impact me. Over time and I I'm not saying I know how to do that, but. It'd be great to be able to look at it as a as a. Citizen and say, oh, I really see what it's going to do for me. Two years from now, three years from now, five years from now.
Can I could understand that. The only point I'll make there is in the implementation plan, we do assign timeframes, short, medium, and long term. Ranges are intentional. I think the agenda item prior to this is a very good example is why you don't want to say something's going to be done in two years. So I think the city and the project team was very sensitive to that when we're building this out and kind of lean toward providing ranges. And zero to five years, it could be, you know, hey, we have an additional funding bucket. Let's do that crossing project.
So rather than timelines, it might be just, this is what it's going to look like in phase one, phase two and phase three. Or something like that. So people can.
Sure.
Be planning ahead. This is what's really coming together.
Yeah, I think another thing to your point about the mapping and yeah, we did, I I I think you as. Counselor Smith, I believe it was your comment at the last public meeting that made us. Put, oh, you don't have the slides up, but we put a special slide in there for you because you wanted the planned network over the existing network. And even when we did that, we were like, oh, boy, this is a lot. So I think.
I realize it's a big ask.
We had talked about, no, just in terms of the level of detail because it is, but we had talked as a team after the fact. In terms of and then to Counselor Scanlon's comment about kind of rolling out the plan, making it digestible. You know, one of the things we had talked about was creating some sort of an interactive mapping, mapping, just online map. Where you could click on and off the things you wanted to see. And so I think maybe, you know, we could, we could talk with this city a bit more in the RPC and we could really take that. Several different ways, but how do we make it approachable? How do we make it usable? Do you click on the projects identified as short, medium or long term? So you can kind of see that build out of the network like you're speaking to. There's a lot of ways we could go with that. I think there is a little bit budget left in the plan. So that's certainly something we could do and it would be, I think, a nice and very approachable add on to the release of the plan.
Thank you. The the one other thing I. Noticed was a comment or a question that I asked. Staff today and got back that there's going to be another sort of step or. Part two. Of the active transportation plan, which was an anticipation to the C C R P C for the next work plan. So. It would be useful to know what that. Next. Step is going to be and how it relates to this one. And how it relates to the neighborhood level versus et cetera.
Absolutely. And the part two really came from a lot of these ongoing conversations and so many of these simultaneous efforts that are going on. So there are a few different. Like major parts of part two that we're imagining. One of the first ones I had already spoken to a bit in terms of the Shelburne Road and Heinsberg Road. They've been looked at many times from this scale, but it's time to zoom in. We're understanding where development is occurring. Understanding that they are both state routes. So is it feasible for something along there? There are all of these origins and destinations that are just barely off. So drilling into those two corridors. That is one big piece of that and that ties directly into also feeding into the official map. So helping us inform our official map. We have some kind of parallel routes on the official map. Should we really have that or should we switch and go all in on one of them? Are there pieces that need to be added? So informing that is another big piece. And then that neighborhood level. And maybe I need a better term for it. It's just how my brain has kind of landed. But looking at some areas where there are some natural bike pad connections or we have a lot of low stress networks that. Low stress streets that don't necessarily need a path or in some cases. Aside, only a sidewalk on one side exists and that's okay. So how do we? Approach those types of areas? The example I think of is the Spear Street one when you're on up swept lane for a little bit or you're on pinnacle for a little bit. How do you still denote that that is part of this route? That this is part of the active transportation network. So getting a better idea on how we can approach that. Those types of areas and incorporating them with things like safe routes to school or our. Public traffic evaluation requests, being able to incorporate some of those a bit more.
So Jesse wanted to make a comment. We're due for a break. If anybody wants to speak from the public really briefly. Because we're way overdue for a break and we have a lot of other items to discuss tonight. So did you want to make a comment first?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I I don't want to lose. I think these are great suggestions about how to make it more accessible and usable to the residents. I also don't want to lose that this is ultimately a planning document for the city. This is in. Pairs on to our climate action plan and pairs on to our city plan. Part of having a very intense plan like this. Is for readiness when other opportunities present themselves. So now we have the data. In hopefully a council endorsed plan. So when Bettina finds a grant funding source for a big. Infrastructure project, we we can demonstrate community buy in. When we see another opportunity with a V Trans project, we can demonstrate community buy in. So yes, successful, but also as a planning tool. It's also meant to just demonstrate that community vision and readiness.
I just want to lastly say that. In spite of the comments that I made, which were like, oh, could you do this? I really recognize the amount of work that went into it and the. Value that it has as that planning tool. So. There's a kudos attached to that. I just wanted to put that. Thank you. Donna, did you want to, is that who's in the back? I can't see very well. Is it, you want to come down and say something? Come on, come on down to the microphone, please, and. Let's make it quick. We're at two hours and thirty twenty five minutes.
Do I push a button?
Pull, yeah, and pull down the microphone.
Push the green button?
Yeah, you're good.
I'm Laura Di Maroni. I live on Dorset Street. I have a couple of questions. One, do any plans ever include maintenance of existing paths? Because a lot of them really need resurfacing or. A lot of work. That's one thing. And does anybody ever consider the fact that we live in Vermont and. These places that we're talking about are not going to be used year round because of the weather that we have. And we act as if this is going to be a year round thing that everybody is going to use, but it's not feasible. And I just wonder those two things. But a lot of the big deal that I feel is important is where is the money going to come from? To keep our existing paths. In good shape enough to use rather than just keep adding more and more and more without anything built into the budget. So if I could have questions for those two things, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So. Laura, can you hear us and can we hear you?
So I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, make it quick, please.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that. In the planning. Sometimes there's a very small project that makes a very big difference. And that would be a good thing to know.
Thank you, Laura. All right. So we're going to take a five minute break. Did you want to say something? Yeah, well, I don't want to pick this issue back up again after the break. So this is it.
Then I will be quick. Nick Anderson, a couple of things. First, I want to fully support this plan. It's great. We definitely needed something that synthesizes the last twenty years worth of work, which has been immense and. The next twenty years worth of work, which will also be immense. So thank you. One thing that I wanted to point out, though, is that it is glaringly missing a lot to do with the word winter or snow. In fact, it's only twice in the plan it says those words and that's it. Whereas in Burlington, the word snow is used fifty four times. And in Burlington's plan, they have a four page. Snow action plan where it has nine recommendations about how to deal with winter because I think. People still walk their dogs. They still walk their kids. They want a bike. But if we don't have a really good action plan of how we deal with winter. Winter's not going away anytime soon. It's just getting weirder. I think we need to. Have something in there as one of those engineering recommendations to to actually focus on it and and make sure we're doing our best we can for winter. And then the second thing I wanted to about is the speed. I love that there is a twenty years plenty recommendation in there. I think we need to focus on speed on every one of our streets, not just our local neighborhood ones. I think we need to bring the speed down on all of our streets, especially our arterials where we might have a forty mile per hour street. Like Kimball that has a bike lane on it. Forty is just crazy. So twenty is plenty, but I think thirty is plenty on all those arterials too. So please help us create like a citywide speed limit or have a recommendation in there that talks about that. And like Mike said, you know, we want this area to be desirable and usable. I think if we maintain it in the winter. And have slow speeds, they will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Bailey online, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Chair Barrett, I just want to point out that other points in time this during this meeting. I've been on since the beginning, public comment. Nobody else has had limited time on the public comment and. I'm very familiar with long meetings and the urgency to have a break, but I think that the active transportation plan. Being presented and something that is so critical to everyone in the city.
Kate, can you get to your point, please?
Okay, well, I I would love to, but I'm just making the point that limiting this discussion feels really bad to somebody who would like to be.
Thank you.
Better represented. And my point is that I live. Very close to the Swift Street Spear Street intersection. I think it is a very important hub. My partner and I trans commute to the hospital and. It is a very important intersection. I'm glad that it was, it came out as a top priority. And I hope that it gets the attention that deserves connecting particularly. Shelburne Road, Spear Street and Dorset Street to one another and connecting my part of town to city center.
Thank you.
And I would love to not be rushed next time. If I'm going to be rushed, I hope everybody gets rushed. Thanks.
Was there somebody else that was in there? Susan Grasso, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll be really quick. Just two things. One is on page fifty five, figure sixteen. Which shows the full prioritized map, project map with existing and planned infrastructure. That map is shown by infrastructure type and I would encourage you to do a duplicate map showing. That same existing and planned infrastructure, but according to level of traffic stress. So that it's really clear. For whom the facilities that are being built. Will. You know, who it will appeal to. So there's a discussion in the the document about. Level of traffic stress and the goal to appeal to all ages and abilities. And I think that would be helpful to see that in a map of the existing and plan, maybe color coded by what is existing and what is planned. And then my second question or question is. If we have additional comments. Are we able to submit them to Erica or the project team before the final version is? Put forth.
It's a good question. You want to answer that?
Yeah, I would say I'm happy to take any questions, comments about them. I don't think we are at a point where we're going to be making, I mean, not even, I don't think we're not at a point where we're making substantive. Larger changes here, but I'm happy to respond to any comments, questions and things that can be incorporated. We can definitely look to do that. So feel free to send them my way. Thanks.
And I see Doug Goodman's online.
Thank you for recognizing me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks, Doug.
Thank you. I just thought occurred to me actually yesterday. Being as this is an active transportation plan, it'd be great if we had a mechanism for. Sort of a triage in in sort of a real time manner in situations where. We need some sort of an intervention on traffic situations. And the. Two pedestrians that were hit on the on ramp to one eighty nine about two months ago. Nothing has happened there. The crossing is still really dark. It's still overgrown. It's a mess and I almost ran into somebody yesterday who was sort of dodging and running across. And it's really hard to see people crossing there. I think it'd be great if. Just, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online? Okay. Thank you very much. Excellent report. Will be very useful in the future. Look forward to hearing part two. When it's ready and use this information to prioritize what we're going to do next. Part two.
Thank you all very much.
And we're gonna take a five-minute break at this point. Thank you, everybody. Five minutes. Okay. Let's resume the meeting tonight, and uh we'll go to item twelve, which is introduce the city's first climate manager and receive a, receive a report on the energy fund with Bettina Miguez, climate action manager, and Lou Brazzi, energy project manager. Come on down.
Alright, so um I think I've said this to the council before, but for the community's benefit as well, this is Bettina Miguez. She is our new uh climate ma- manager. We are thrilled to have her on the team. Uh, she's really hit the ground running. Um, I think most folks know we had about fifty applicants for this position. It was a really interesting position to fill. I tried to get a lot of them to become cops because we don't have fifty applications. No, totally failed. Um, but uh one of the really interesting things about the process is we had candidates from with really diverse backgrounds, and Bettina throughout the process uh rose to the top of that list every time. Uh, she comes to us with twenty years of experience working in the environmental field across uh policy work, advocacy work, modeling work, and government work. Um, she's worked internationally and at the state level and locally. Um, she has a bachelor's of science in engineering, civil and environmental inju- engineering from Princeton, and a master's in soil science from the University of Wisconsin at Madison. Um, not only has she worked as an environmental engineer, but she's worked internationally. Um, and most recently was Stone Environmental here in Vermont, which is uh organization we work with a lot. Um, Bettina's also a South Burlington resident and has already hit the ground, uh already has experience um working on climate work in the city through her work with the school district and the ZEMS. So now that I have thoroughly embarrassed her, this is Bettina. And now also Lou has a team, which is super exciting, um and is primarily here tonight to walk you through his uh energy savings report. Um, but thought it was also a good opportunity to have Bettina here to say hi.
Hello. I'm Bettina Miguez. Um, yes, the first climate action manager um of the city of South Burlington. It is a very exciting role. It is extremely, it's an extremely challenging time to step up to this position. Um, but we'll make the most of it, uh learning about everything that's been going on already. Um, seeing where I um can best be useful to existing projects, seeing what we need to prioritize and and move forward with as soon as possible uh from the rest of the climate action plan, meeting a lot of the internal actors, external actors, all sorts of things. Um, so and and with that, I do wanna say that um I look forward to meeting with each each and every one of you as well, um to hear your thoughts in this position.
Great, thank you. And did you folks have a report for us tonight?
I have that.
Okay, it's coming.
In the process, uh, in terms of Bettina hitting the road in a hurry, her second day here, she sat in on the energy committee meeting and so forth, so she didn't take any time to get started. Some questions arose a while back with regards to how we handle savings and so forth. And what I wanted to do tonight is walk through, um, talk about how we think about savings at the beginning of a project, what we do with it as we move through the project, and uh how we track it at the end. The uh, right off the bat, anytime the project's a big project, savings are right on the top of the list as to what we wanna talk about and so forth. Uh, the next chart's gonna show some details as to how we do that. Though not the I can talk fast, Jesse, but not fast. Yeah. The the real thing I wanna do, at this point in time, is say, the big projects get a real rigid examination. Uh, we've talked for four years now about uh things out of the airport parkway. We've been looking at potential savings and what it's cost to do it, and that's an ongoing process. And the reason we haven't moved out on those projects is because we haven't gotten to the place where it's economically the appropriate thing to do. The uh, it's really savings are the key data, like it says up there. After projects completed, the big projects, we track monthly, and I'm gonna show you in a couple of slides how we do that and so forth. But we do a lot of small projects. When we talk to all the employees about what we can do in government ops to get rid of uh greenhouse gases and so forth. And we've talked about chainsaws, and we talked about lawnmowers and so forth. Those things, we haven't really worried a whole lot about what the dollar savings are. We know it's the right thing to do, and we've moved forward. But after projects completed, on the big ones, we go back, and I'll give you an example in a couple of minutes. You know, what was projected, what are we really getting? So now we'll foot one. Recent and current projects. Old project, LED lights in the police station. The real difficulty with savings there is we've got one meter electric meter going in. Lights are a very small percentage of the total electric bill in in uh the police station. Two, three, five percent change is awful hard to see, but efficiency Vermont did a calculation to give us a rebate on that, which was, if I remember correctly, six thousand dollars. And in that calculation, they ginned up what the savings would be. That's the savings that were were projected, and that's the savings that we're using in our calculations for going into the energy fund, which I'll talk about it again.
Is there one meter on that whole building? The police station and the CDC and the veterans and and the CSWD?
Two.
Two meters, okay.
Electric, gas. You asked a question, I gave you the answer.
That's, that's too bad. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, and that's, that's a a big issue in some other places. We'll talk about it in a minute. Um, new boilers at Gregory Gregory Drive. We've looked at that very closely. We just couldn't come up with enough savings on going to heat pumps to justify the very large expense there. Um, but uh we've got numbers on what the boiler efficiency improvement's gonna be and so forth. Uh, we may be able to see some numbers on actual data out of that, and uh we might even be able to adjust them for whether we have a warm winter or a cold winter. I hope they're big enough to so, to pop up and you'll see them in the low, but we'll be tracking them. Back to the single meter thing, Barton Bay, we're talking about that extensively. And one of the key things that I am advocating the incorporation of is separate electric meters on the big power stuff, so we can keep track of what's going on there. The revolving fund. This was created by uh, the idea came forth from a fellow named Keith Epstein, who's been with the energy committee since its conception. Uh, he got, the idea really comes out of Harvard University. Uh, they make a big thing out of that. They are, the idea is to take the savings, it's so logical, crank it back into advance new projects. Well, Harvard's running around with about three hundred fifty million dollars in that fund, as I understand right now. That's a little bit bigger than what we deal with, so we handle it a little bit differently. The also, other thing I wanna mention is that when this was created, we were not talking about greenhouse gases like we are now. Everything was about dollars and cents. So we changed how we're running a little bit. But the current practice, income, where are we getting the money from? The landfill solar array is the biggest thing that we've got, and that's worth about a hundred thousand dollars a year as income into this fund. The second biggest one is Market Street Array, right on top of the building. And that's worth about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, I'll show you some calculations in a, in a couple of minutes if you're interested. And expenses. Small projects. I mentioned chainsaws, it's that, you know, the sort of thing. To the best of my knowledge, at this point in time, well, let me back up. We all talked about lawnmowers. We talked about public works, and we did that for two or three years. When we went to the employees, what did we find out? The fire company has a whole bunch of gas, had a whole bunch of gas-powered stuff that they carried on their trucks to open doors, et cetera. It's now virtually all electric. So we've just done that, but we, we haven't uh worried about it. The other thing we're using the funds for is small studies, like before we got to the police station, boiler replacement, we hired an engineer to go in, take a look, make some recommendations. He did. That's how we got to to where we are. We've also done a study on how to locate uh charges for EVs throughout the city, uh that kind of thing. Let's try for the next one. You're way ahead of me. Uh, I'm just putting up a list here of the things that are in this twenty-five CIP that uh what we're doing on, let me slide my notes to make sure I get them, get them right. Um, particularly on the Wheeler House, it talks about basement weatherization. Uh, that was the word that we used almost two years ago when this plan was initially put together. Uh, whether the weatherization is really gonna be totally in the basement is up for grabs. But all the windows in that place were replaced about three months ago, two months ago, so as a, for instance. Uh, the boiler replacement, the police station, we got the bids in Friday. We'll be evaluating them this week. And uh that project ought to be taking place, uh, well, we're probably gonna wait till it gets a little warmer, maybe, because we're gonna have to shut down the building for at least today kinda thing. Vehicle replacements, we've ordered four EVs. We're waiting to hear when they're gonna come in. The list is long. Everybody's buying them, uh, so.
What's the, what is the, so Fire Station One has some charging stations? Are those for, for what, for cars?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so how, how, what's the forty-four K for, for the, the, the charge point stations and?
Oh, bro.
The forty-four?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I saw the two forty-four down the road, I got mistripped it. They put us in a, a station very quickly for the trailer, for something that car would come. We're probably gonna upgrade that station uh to fit more into the charge point network that we have out here and and other places around, but yes.
So, so how many posts will there be? How many charging kiosks with a double gun, probably?
If we go, if we go the whole round, we'll have at least four plugs and maybe even eight.
Okay.
Yeah. And the overall intention of those things is city use.
Yeah.
You got a card.
Yeah.
City employees, if it fits in, with a card, and the public with a card. Last one being a credit card.
So, thank you.
Wanted to give you an idea of the kinds of things.
Yep, I'm ready.
On the revolving fund, this is a very busy chart. Uh, I only intentionally lopped off one year's worth of income, just so that you could actually see some numbers if you were worried about it and so forth. The point that I wanna make on this chart is that ever since the fund was created, uh, this Excel spreadsheet has been operating on basically a monthly basis, and it's about five years long now, and we uh, this is, we do planning from it. And uh, next chart's gonna sh- uh, gonna show you a graph, but no, it's not the next, yeah, there it is. The blue line is, again, goes back going to June of twenty-three, but uh shows the actuals. And uh you'll notice the dip right about the end of the fiscal year. That's because Martha and I sit down and make sure that we're both using the same set of numbers reconciled. There's some end of the year things that she wastes until the end of the year to put into the book, so that's what the dip is there. And then the two dotted lines are a high and a low estimate as to where we might be in the future. And the things that you can't see, I'm gonna show you on the next page, but all came about because Martha said to me, hey, you got three hundred thousand dollars in that kitty. What are you gonna use it for? And so forth. And uh, so we put together a, a chart, uh, we had it already, and uh just laid out what the timing phase was on those projects. And the next chart, I believe, will uh let you see what some of those things are. The real point to be made here, though, is that what this fund does is supplement department budgets. Excellent example is vehicles. When we buy an EV, and let's just, let's just take a truck because we aren't buying one right now. But if you're gonna buy a pickup truck, and the one you're replacing is a gasoline engine truck, and you go down to Heritage, or wherever you go, and it's gonna cost you seventy thousand dollars, that's the replacement cost. That's a department budgeted item that they do. If we want an electric pickup truck, it's gonna cost a little bit more. And what we have done with vehicles across the board is the delta between the gas version or the diesel version and the electric version is coming out of the revolving fund. So that's how that's basically working on those two kinds of projects. We'll do the same thing, doing the same thing with the boilers. So forth, so uh, I think that covers mine, but I'm certainly open for questions.
I have, yeah, I have a couple. Um, a couple of things are confusing me, and I have a question. So if we just focus on this page, this shows that um for the four EV Kona vehicles, the incremental twenty thousand is coming from the revolving fund. Is that what you mean? But I thought we separately allocated twenty from the Opera Inspired Fund. So I'm confused by what source we're actually drawing um some of these amounts from. Just it, I, I'm not able to square it.
I think we're drawing from multiple sources.
So you, so you're saying that the EV Kona is actually forty thousand extra? We drew twenty from Opera and twenty from revolving?
And twenty from the rental registry fund. So I think they, to Jesse's point, they came from multiple spot, spots. I'd have to go back, but certainly, certainly some unbalanced some out of
Just for the EV Konas?
For the Konas.
So, okay, that's confusing to me too, because Konas, um, the retail is about thirty-two with the tax credit seventy-five, net of twenty-five thousand a car, so the four cars total are a hundred. But you're telling me they're sixty thousand dollars more than four ICE vehicles would be. I'm just not able to square all this. I'd, I'd love to see, honestly.
Just a reminder, we weren't, when we bought the Konas, we were also buying new vehicles. We weren't replacing vehi- we were replacing two vehicles going out of service and adding two vehicles.
Instead, Jesse, but I thought what we're looking at here is the incremental cost of an EV over a fossil fuel car, and now what you're telling me, it's twenty from here, twenty from Opera, some from rental registry. So I'm, I'm just not able to um square all these numbers, honestly. Just, it's um.
We can give you an accounting of that.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate the accounting of that. Thank you. Um. Then the second thing is, um, so I actually asked for this, and what would be really useful to me, because this doesn't really show it. You know, in twenty-five, we spent, I think, two hundred forty-four thousand dollars on kind of climate-related um infrastructure.
We're in the process of, but yes.
Okay, but we allocated.
Yeah.
And in fiscal year twenty-six, we allocated three forty-five. And the community has a lot of questions about the utility of those dollars. And what I would love to see is we spent, or allocating, two forty-four in twenty-five, three forty-five in twenty-six, for each of those years, for those projects. This is how much we expect to save over the lifetime of those projects, and this is the net cost to the city.
Happy, happy to put it together.
Okay. Um, finally, Bettina, thank you so much for joining, and I appreciate the difficulty of the environment I think that we're in. I think given the environment we're in, it's like so much more critically important. Your role is so critically important, because if we don't do this here, we don't do it well. And if our neighboring municipalities and neighboring states don't do it well, our children have no future. So there's nothing more important.
She's got two kids. She knows. She's got two kids, she knows.
I have a question about, does this fund operate as an enterprise fund?
No.
It does not. So. The sources of the funds, I mean, some of this, you said anything we say that comes into the fund. But does that have to be, am I misunderstanding that?
Let me answer it this way, because I went to, went to see Martha this morning to make sure that I, that she and I were on the right place. This is money that is in the city's net operation. Total. It's carved out, the chief keeps track of it, as far as in and out, so it's a subset of the total. It is not separate in any way, shape or form. And I guess the other point that I want to make is that. I am very much aware, and I think all the departmental managers are married, it's all city money. So whether it's in the fund or whether it's in a department budget, as far as the citizens are concerned. Shouldn't make a whole lot of difference. I think it's important to Andrew's kinds of questions with regards to. Knowing when we put money into a particular project, are we getting the right kind of payback?
I think, I think in the end, I'm probably asking the same question you are, Andrew, but it was confusing whether there was an allocation of sources of funds. And then if it was tied to either cost avoidance or savings, did there have to be? You know, some action allocating those funds. So I'm better understanding it now, but I think. Andrew's question would also answer my question too. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. You're, you're very committed to what you do and you're, it's very clear. And I've seen you at some meetings and it's consistent.
You're the first person that says it's clear, but thank you.
No, 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 you strive hard to do it. And, and welcome, it's great to have the team expanding. I would just echo what I guess both Andrew and Elizabeth were saying. Just same with when we were talking about the active transportation plan, there are a lot of numbers, very complex. But I think to make it clear to our taxpayers, the why. And the why not in a sort of a, a large why, but a sort of day to day, how does it affect me? Why just as, you know, if we have this connected path, if you live in X neighborhood, you can now do these things, and there's a direct correlation. And I think also the, the savings, the impacts, given how tough the budget is. And will continue to be, I think that's for communication and to continue support for community, that's gonna be pivotal. So, thank you.
Let me give you a real quick example.
Okay.
As something that the fund has done, very shortly after the fund was created. This building was being finished, finalized. And there was no place in the budget at the time for putting the soul on the top. And the city said, is this a place to use the fund? And we said, well, we only got seventy thousand dollars and we got a two hundred plus thousand dollar project. And the city said, we're gonna use the fund, we know we're gonna get the money in the future. And the fund went in the red by almost two hundred thousand dollars. Two years later, we paid it back and we're still going. But that's the kind of flexibility that it, it has given us collectively to work with.
And as I said, you're very clear. The thing is to be sure we're clear to the public as well, so that's a great example. Thank you.
And I, I just want to say that example you gave. Is really critical piece of information for our citizens to have. Because very often, the money that's being spent on quote, energy or. Climate is seen as a want rather than a need. And yet, those monies are giving us payback. And for people to be able to see that I'm spending this money now, it's saving us expenses in the future. And it is also paying back. And the more that gets publicized, the easier it is to be able to support the work you guys are doing. That's why we put a screen up. On, when we had the energy fair back in October, and tried to tell the story and so forth. And I will point out that the output on that array. Is instantaneously available on the website twenty four hours a day now.
I just wanted to comment too, that we've been working on content that we want to add to the website. Related to the climate action plan and all the actions that we're taking related to the climate action plan. And this, these comments about being very clear with the payback is particularly like in the government operation side of things. We're gonna take that into account. And, and we did, we were thinking about ways in which we could convey that visually. In a, in a good way, so.
Yeah, I, I just think of, of an accounting, right? We spend two forty four. Over the course of the project, we expect to save one eighty, therefore we expect, we say, you know, the spending is really sixty four. Simple, clean, three numbers.
There is a section on the webpage that we already have planned out for projects, past, current and future. And put those financial data summary stuff right there.
Yeah.
For everybody.
It's really simple and transparent.
Yep.
Thank you.
So if, if folks have not played around yet on the new city website, if you might remember in the old city website, we had to. Get to search for climate action plan or know where it was on Paul's site, so you had to know to go to planning and zoning to get to blah, 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 blah. And as he was thinking about a more customers or a more resident focused website, created this project initiatives link. So people might think, oh, you know, climate may be a project or initiative or whatnot. So this is where it is, right on the top, city action or climate action. And this is the site that Bettina was saying they're going to build out, but it's, as you see, it's a separate embedded, specifically climate action planned. Set of pages on our site where we can list all of our climate initiatives, the climate action plans right here. The city hall energy dashboard that Lou's talking about is right here, and an action button goes back to the city plan. So we are trying to go in this direction. Just wanted to point out that this was here, if folks have not played around it here yet.
And that picture that you're looking at, or just looked at, that's a hundred thousand dollars in your income to us.
And there's zero output from those panels right now, I just want to point that out. Right now, even the ones on top of this building, zero output.
And they're still making that much money.
I don't understand. So much of this I don't understand, but thank you. Any other comments? Uh, any other brief comments from the audience on this, either online or in the house? Well, I certainly look forward to hearing from both of you in the future. I know that you're gonna do really good work and it's gonna be a real asset for the city and for all the residents, so I appreciate your presence here tonight. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Bettina. Thank you, Lou.
We'll move on to item thirteen, which is discussion and possible action to, about the Dorset Street lighting project and provide direction to staff with. Tom DiPietro, Public Works Director, come on down.
So while Tom's getting sets, set up at nine thirty. Just sort, so I think the real, your role as city council to state the obvious is to adopt policy. And go or no go projects and allocate funding for it. So this is a project that's been before you for a couple of times. And we as staff did not have clarity on what you want to do with it, so it is now back in front of you for that decision. If you would like, Tom can summarize it again, or.
Good evening, folks. Tom DiPietro, Public Works Director. This item is on the agenda tonight at the request of, I think, council. So I pulled together a memo to kind of review what we talked about when we awarded the Dorset Street paving. I'm not sure if Susan is still online to, I think she is, but she can chat a little bit about. Safer to school requests. So this is, I think, the third time in the last three months we've been here to talk about this, so. I can summarize if you might like, or try to answer questions.
I would go ahead and summarize, if you, if you could, for the audience as well.
You want me to?
Well, yeah, you first.
Okay, sorry, you were gonna, um, sure. So Dorset Street, our phase four, the last piece of it in front of the high school. We awarded that paving bid in December. As part of that, we had a bid alternate to add sixteen lights on that stretch of Dorset Street. We had the engineer do an evaluation to look at lighting on Dorset Street first, they put together a plan. We put that out with the bid so that we could get a quality price, understand how much that would cost and potentially move forward if that was council's wish. To date, we have awarded the base contract, which is the paving work and a consolidated crosswalk. That consolidated crosswalk has three RRFBs, those yellow flashing lights with the button. Also has two streetlights right next to it, so that's all part of the base project. But this additional sixteen light fixtures up and down Dorset Street is sort of the, the piece still to be discussed or determined, I suppose.
And, and those sixteen lights would be set back on the outside of the sidewalk, right? Some on the school property, some on safe property and some on two other owners' properties as well.
That's correct. So in order for these lights to shine on the sidewalk where we want the light and not spill out of the right of way onto private property. They are sited on the backside of the sidewalk, and that's a good thing. I should have mentioned in my summary, there's some small ten foot by ten foot easements we would need from the property owners. I believe it's eight of them are on school property, two are on city property at five seventy five Dorset Street. And the remainder are split on three private properties. So if we were gonna move forward with this, we would also have to go and approach those homeowner, or those property owners to get those small easements as well.
And, and just to reiterate, so the paving project removes the two existing RRFB crosswalks. Consolidate, sorry, consolidates them to one, which approximately aligns up with the bus shelter going over towards the fire station, right? With a refuge interim pedestrian area, right in the middle of the street, right?
All correct, yes.
Okay, but there is no RRFB in the middle of the street, just on the sides of the street?
There is one in the middle as well.
There is one in the middle as well, okay.
And it's got the larger sign panels too, I believe.
Okay, all right. So, and that'll act more like the one that's now on, on Kennedy Drive at, at the bottom of, of Grandview, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, that's good. All right, so just a question, so we would need easements signed by all those property owners. And, and does the city have to go through an easement on itself? I'm just curious.
Uh, we own the property.
Yeah.
Uh, we do not need to, though it would be worthwhile if that property were to ever change hands, we'd wanna make sure we reserve the right to maintain our lights.
Process you had to go through for that, okay. All right. So at this point, we don't have any easements signed by any landowners that are not the city for these fourteen or so. Lights, right?
Yep.
That's correct. Okay, so you, you had a bid alternate contract, right, with the paver to do this work to add in, it was around two hundred and?
Two eighty six, two hundred eighty six thousand.
Two, two what?
Two hundred eighty six thousand.
Two hundred eighty six thousand? Okay, and, and that's on top of the, the paving contract, which is already accepted, right?
Correct.
All right, and so, but we can't start that work until we have easements signed off, if we wanted to do that work, is that correct?
So if we were to add that in, we would put ourselves at a little bit of risk. So we would have to tell the contractor to move forward at this point through a change order.
Yeah.
Presumably, they would hold their price, but that, I can't guarantee that until I ask the question at this point. And then we'd have to go get, get those easements. So they would then order those materials, there's a pretty long lead time on them. So we would own the materials at that point. And so then we would, yeah, have to go get those easements to make sure that we could do the installation.
So I'm just throwing this, this fishing line out there with the experience we've had getting easements signed for major projects. None of them are done within six months, right? And, and this paving project is supposed to happen in the summertime?
Paving will take place when school is out, it was planned accordingly. And the lighting could take place at any point, it is not within that paved surface, there's no impacts there.
Right, right.
It's just in the same kind of physical location along Dorset Street.
Right, but worst case, I'm thinking, if you didn't have easements signed for two years, would that contract still be good? To do that work?
I think we could work it out with the contract, there'd probably be a final limit on there, but yeah, we still have to do the change order, so we'd have to extend the contract date. And the contractor has to be amenable.
And would you want all the easements signed before you started the work?
Ideally, we'd have, yeah, yeah, all sixteen.
I'm just trying to set the. Yeah, no, I just wanted to get those questions out in the open first, because, I mean, this is not a simple thing with the sixteen lights. All right, and so I'll open it for counselors now. Lori? Go ahead.
I'll go. So, two quick questions. Did I hear you say that the groundwork for the lights is not, does not have to be coordinated with the, with the paving work? If it was done after the paving, it would not be impacting the paving work?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, the paver actually has a subcontractor who they've retained to, to do the lighting work. Both on the island, right, with the RRFBs and those two lights, and also they would do this work.
But, so the side, the sidewalk lights would not impact the paving?
That's correct, they're on the outside.
Second question. The groundwork costs, the groundwork and the pedestals versus the cost of the, of the poles and the lights? Do you know proportionally, like, is the groundwork seventy five percent of the work or?
They were bid by unit, and I could probably get you a pretty good estimate if I went back in, so it's all inclusive, the groundwork and, you know. So I'd have to go back and look a little closer at the bid alt figure and then, yeah, look at some unit prices to answer that.
And then the last question I have, the lights that are on Market Street on the sidewalks, are those sixteen or twenty? No, it's a downlight that's on the top of it.
So the lights on Dorset, on Market, I apologize, are sixteen foot tall. What is proposed?
Is twenty.
Is, I think it was twenty.
Yeah.
Cause there's two different lights, the light of the crosswalk and then these other lights, so.
And I know that the, that the Market Street lights are round, so they're casting in both directions. And we're trying to have the light just go on the sidewalk, but. It's a better looking light and it's lower, and it's more contained. Could they be put on the, on the. Grass side or the street side of the sidewalk and still get the impact that we want? And have a lower light?
Um, I know the engineer looked at a variety of different lights and lighting options. We have some general standards in our public works specs for lights. Based on location, so we've got that certain style for Market Street in our new downtown, which is slightly different. Going back to one of the conversations we had previously, I think a lot of folks, myself included, thought, well, we have a lot of poles out in this area. We could just put something hanging off the backside of a pole, and it would be a very inexpensive project. It was demonstrated how that would spill a lot of light outside of our right of way, which we didn't want to do. I think a similar concern to put what you suggested.
Okay.
Would do some of the same. I'm getting a little bit out of my depth, I know there might be somebody online or in the room that does lighting design.
Okay.
But it's a type two light distribution, kind of, I always view it as like a semicircle, is what we're shooting for, to really light inside our own right of way and not outside.
The last question I have is, if this lighting decision was postponed. Until the work in the RRFBs and the crosswalks with the new lights that they're gonna have were put in. And it was decided that it was still needed, would doing it as a second project dramatically increase the cost of it? Do you know?
I think it's, it's difficult for me to say, because you're asking me to kind of predict the future, but I think you'd have move and de-move costs in the whole new contract. We'd have to go back and work with the engineer to rebid it, is what I'm hearing you ask.
Yeah.
So there would be some additional costs to do this later separately.
Okay, thank you.
Another question, the power for each of those sixteen lights, would that have to come from the existing street lights? And would you have to cut through the sidewalk shared use path to, to bury that conduit, or would you drill underneath it, or what would you?
Um, that's a level of detail, Tim, I could pull up plans and show you, I'm not comfortable answering it. If it's pertinent to your decision-making process, I can do that. But there are sixteen different lights with, you know, pulled power from existing sources on Dorset. Yeah, I don't know that offhand.
Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Sure, no, not, not at all, be time here. I was thinking back to the, the last conversation that we had, and I remember one of the concerns expressed by some people online. Was that if you create a, a particular section of Dorset Street, these, where these sixteen lights at a, at a certain level of lighting. You know, would there be, and expect, you know, would, would other parts of Dorset go in either directions? North, south, or would parts of Kennedy Street say, why don't we have the same lighting? And I was just wondering, because I, in the memo you wrote, which I really appreciated. You mentioned two things that sort of caught my attention. Lori mentioned one, that you emphasized that the lighting that is going to be at the crosswalk, which I understand is right next to the main exit point for the parking lot. Is, is going to be reinforced and strengthened, i- if I'm not mistaken. And then you also mentioned that there's another light that had fallen down on. Uh and then you also mentioned that there's another light that had fallen down on at about a hundred feet down. And that was, the plan was to restore that, and then also in the description you'd mentioned that. Trees around that sort of helped dim the light, so I was just, what I'm what I'm getting at is one thing I noticed in the. Safe routes to school task force, and thank you for sharing the 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 defining terms. There really wasn't a pathway to how money would be got gotten, so you know, there's a lot of planning done, a lot of ideas, but it doesn't necessarily tie itself up to money. Uh and I was just wondering if these three changes, if you know, you you put the additional lights at the crosswalk, if you have that extra light that was knocked down. Put up, if pruning is possible, you know, could it be raised to a life of a a level of increased safety? And could this two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that would be augmented for it? Instead of going to paving, as you said in your memo, go to the sidewalk. Yeah, by Chamberlain, which would be another safety feature, so you know, you were already gonna do one, if we could reach, improve the lighting around this high school, middle school. And yet still save that money and move it to do the sidewalks that were also designated as a priority. I mean, is that even conceivable, or or is that just too farfetched?
So I think that's what we're here to discuss, this is council's prerogative, um there is money in the paving fund, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, you know, we've built that up. To make sure we could finish Dorset Street, those bids came back uh good, for lack of a better word, so we have some funds set aside. Those funds could be used for these lights, if that's council's desire, um if not, I could use it for paving streets. Or um if council wanted to make some sort of fund transfer, um it could be used for some other purpose too, I I think that's entirely. Uh the point of tonight's discussion is to be able to move forward in some way.
Thank you, and and it's good to know, I guess what's not, at least for me, I don't feel confident to make a judgment is. Would the lighting, if you just put it over the crosswalks and the enhanced lighting that's coming, is pruning possible and the restoration of light? Would that significantly change the lighting and and perhaps address the proceed, you know, the safety issue about not enough lighting around? Where there's the most traffic in and out of the school, uh and if so, then I would thought, would think that would be great. I would at least advocate for moving the remaining two eighty-six or unspent money to to the the sidewalk by Chamberlain. But you know, the lighting, is it enough? That's a professional call, I'm I'm far from a professional on lighting.
Yep, so I I'm gonna just kinda quote to you from the uh memo that the engineer provided from memory, so um if someone has it open, please correct me. But um when the engineer went out and he built the model out, the light, did the photometrics. Uh he found that the lighting was sufficient and that it met minimum standards in the area. Uh they also noted that tree cover can reduce lighting by, I think, ten to twenty percent is what he said. Uh so I think we were at point six or point seven foot candle, um and the the standard was point four or point five for sidewalks is what we were using. Um and then there was perhaps more to your.
In your memo, you said there are three factors that I I noticed that are affecting the lighting, one was the foliage around that you said to be pruned. The other one was this additional lighting in the crosswalk, which is right next to the primary access point and uh entry point to the parking lot of the school. And then you mentioned some uh uh s- a street light that was had fallen down, that was like a hundred feet down. So I was just wondering, all combination of all those things, could they raise it enough that we do have safety, which is clearly the goal? And and then we'd get about benefit from it in not having to spend the two eighty-six and actually be able to do the sidewalk at Chamberlain as well.
So I think uh that's where we're getting to the the judgment call that I think council and the community need to make here. Um councillor Scanlon, so I've provided you the engineering report already, uh with those details in the middle, we we keep going for a second here, so. And within that, we did get some photometrics that show um lighting is improved, so those foot candle figures I mentioned, they're an average along the sidewalk, right? Um so it changes at different points, uh there is a light that was further up by San Remo that a truck hit two or three times. That hadn't been replaced yet, uh the part got backordered, so that's gonna get replaced as well, that's from a previous meeting discussion. Um that is kind of further north on the corridor, a little bit away from uh the high school, middle school.
But I guess my question is, the the lighting figure that you provided, that is as is? Or as would be if you restored that one lighting, you pruned the trees and you put the additional lighting uh over the crosswalks, which you're committed to doing?
Point six to point seven foot candle is as is.
As is.
Um and there's no factor in there for, that doesn't discount that value for um branches and leaves and things. So you would take ten to twenty percent off that uh based on what the engineers provided in this memo.
Can I just restate where the we are in the situation, right? Okay, so uh uh just give me one second here, so. We have increased lighting at the crosswalk, that's a signalized crosswalk at the entrance to the high school uh middle school, right? In in this new paving plan, we removed two RFBs and combined them to one with a pedestrian refuge and an RFB in the middle of the street, right? We also have a signalized full crossing down at at Dorset and Kennedy. Okay, we have a statement from the engineer that says that there is a a bit of reduction in in light filtration when the trees are are have all their leaves. So I guess the quick question I have is 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 how hard is it for us to go in and trim some of those trees to let more light through? And has anybody talked about that? I'm just curious.
Yep, so um like I mentioned last time, um the arborist went out and took a look at that and did some trimming. Uh we can go back out and see if there's additional trimming that uh is possible, uh but as you know, the arborist retired, so. Uh when we get the new person on board, uh that's something we can certainly look at, kind of late winter, early spring perhaps, um.
But that's something that's that's not difficult to do and and is within an existing budget to go trim some trees?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead now, Andrew.
So so Tom, before I um ask some questions, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the engineering diagram. So there's one page which shows the existing lighting analysis. And it has in blue the portion of the sidewalks that don't meet the point five foot candle standard. Does that page reflect the improvements that are already baked in to the paving? Or and if not, is there a page that reflects uh the 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 foot candle um? Analysis and those improvements, do to do we have that?
Yeah, so the engineer provided uh two photometric plans, one's existing as it is today, and then one is proposed um with all, with all lights.
But including the sixteen, as I'm saying, is there is there an intermediate one that shows?
No, there's no intermediate.
So notice, we don't have a a view of the foot candles with the baked-in improvements.
When you said the baked-in improvements, I think. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, those are included with everything.
Let me just have a question again, wh- what I'm seeing here is two pages, one shows existing lighting and then one shows proposed. And I, when I read the proposed, it seems to reflect the sixteen additional. Do do we have one that just shows existing with the incremental additional that's baked into the paving plan?
Those are the two lights at the crosswalk, when you say, yes, we do not have one that just shows.
Okay, we don't have.
Those two additional lights.
So, alright, so I get to, I mean, this one is like really I'm struggling with, because I um. I can really see the argument for making this particular stretch of road brighter. Than other stretches of road, this is where we concentrate. All of our middle school and high school students, right, so other stretches of road is much lower density. This is where everyone is gonna come together, there's gonna be a lot of commotion and foot traffic and bike traffic. And there's, you know, students that are just learning to drive, getting in and out of, you know, the high school lot, the middle school lot. And I can, you know, it, to me, it makes a lot of sense for that. Um because of that, for that area to be brighter, and it's really defensible to make that area brighter. Than surrounding areas because of all that um commotion. Having said that, I'm not a lighting engineer, and as we just said, we don't know what the foot candle analysis looks like. After we've improved it with what's already baked in to the paving plan. And I would kinda love to understand that, I kinda love to understand. Um how much improvement is there with the things that we've already agreed to fund before then? You know, deciding to allocate money to make further improvements, because we wanna make sure. That the money we do allocate is giving us the biggest and best bang for the buck. Across the city and not just put it into plans that, you know, I I I know there's a lot of emotional, right? Um there's a lot of emotion surrounding this particular plan for very good reason, but we still need to do it. We need to make decisions based on on data, right, and and schematics and and we don't, we don't actually have that right now. So it's hard for me, hard for me to forward, the other thing is, you know, with easements, you know, we know easements take a year or two, sometimes five years. Sometimes you have to go to eminent domain, we don't know if the landlord is gonna give us easements, and I have a reluctance to enter into a contract today. You know, and pay for stuff, um when the future is uncertain, like I would much rather know we've got the easements. And then, okay, if we all feel at that point that we need this incremental lighting, which I can see strong arguments for. Okay, then we go and like bid it out again after we have all the easements, it just seems like it's. It's a little bit carpet for the horse to um agree to contract something before we know that it can be built. So, like I said, I'm struggling with this one, I I I probably come down to waiting for for all those reasons.
Elizabeth?
I mean, I I share a lot of the comments that have already been made, um to me. The proposal isn't a hundred percent compelling around. Solving a problem that it 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 almost feels like a an inelegant solution. That might be addressed by, one, the 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 safety initiatives that are gonna be done anyway. As well as just more vigilant tree trimming in the area. And I also think about, we've been hearing about other safety issues at some of our other school properties and. I don't know where, you know, we haven't done this exercise, sort of triaging projects around the city associated with. One of our more vulnerable populations being our students, and I don't know where this one would fall, so. I I know I asked the question about what would the, just what Andrew was asking is what was would be the impact of the lighting at the cross section? And I did notice that someone helped us clear that a little bit when I drove by it, um. It looks like there might have been an accident on that median between there and um and the Aspen uh drive light as well. Um but we also heard uh initially just some work around educating too. Um so I just, I feel like this, a- and and I, as I drove here tonight, I was looking at the number of light poles. And thinking about adding sixteen more poles and really not having assurances that. We weren't addressing most of the safety issues with some of the improvements already, so I'm I'm inclined to. Um uh wait on this as well, but to consider funding some of the other safety. Projects that have been identified and address those in a normal process.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Can I add one more piece?
Go ahead.
I just wanna say that um if this is postponed, I will say. So that we do this first phase, see how it impacts the safety and the and the lighting, I'd love to hear from Donna also, but. If we go that route, I would like to see the the extra funds that you talked about, Tom, be reserved for. Safety issues, whether to, whether it's used at Chamberlain or whether it's used for for a second phase where these lights get put in.
And not paving.
And not and not paving, that it gets that it gets reserved for what it could be used for here. Either at a later date or for some other safety concern around our schools and safe routes to schools.
Thanks, Laurie, do we wanna let Donna speak? Donna, did you wanna speak?
Uh yes, um I've I've had a couple of co- can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, um I had a couple of conversations um this week. Uh with people to kind of let them know what my what my real concern was, and I don't think anybody's brought this up. Um but in terms of um co- contrast with adjacent streets. Um I I really believe that adding more lighting, other than this um crosswalks. You absolutely adding more lighting at the crosswalks is essential, and that's part of the base base project. But um increasing significantly the amount of sidewalk lighting only on this one stretch. While it is in front of the schools, it it leaves a an undesirable effect. Uh for um basically walkers or bikers who are heading either south on Dorset Street. Or east on Kennedy Drive, where there is, well, Kennedy Drive has very, very little lighting on it. And there was, there was a study that was uh prop- was um done and uh presented to Bike and Ped. Sometime last year, maybe the year before, um about about lighting um Kennedy Drive. Um there's not a lot of lighting south on Dorset Street, there's a couple of isolated poles, but it's it's not regular. And there's certainly nothing underneath the interstate bridge, um and having bicycled from city meetings at night. On those sections of streets, I mean, the the sections along Dorset Street generally are pretty good. In terms of, you know, your ability to basically see what's in front of you, it's as soon as you get south of Kennedy. That you really can't see anything because, one, headlights are coming right at you. Um and the contrast with the headlights and no lighting on the sidewalk makes it really difficult visually. Um um and then when you get up to uh Veterans Park, you have a hedge between you and the street. So you're not at least getting the headlights in your eyes, but it really becomes dark there on on the pathway. And when we have, you know, there's more more kids biking and and walking from school and certainly in the. The the darkest part of the winter, um if you stay after school, you're you're virtually in, you're in a very dark situation. So I would recommend against adding the lighting beyond that at the crosswalks. And, you know, as everybody's talking, lo- uh look at the lighting around the schools. And particularly the pathways where kids are gonna be walking uh early in the mornings or or late in the evenings, or anybody, not just kids. And, you know, if you're gonna do any lighting, I'd say try to do it more uniformly. And not focus more lighting in places that already meet the standards, cause the standards are not minimum standards, people say minimum standards. Assuming that more is better, and that's not the case, um the IESNA is very clear that the standard is the standard. And that more is not uh is not what they're recommending.
Great, thank you, Donna.
Sure.
Anybody in the house wanna speak on this briefly, please?
Hello, Nick Anderson, um so as a parent, I have a different foot candle measurement and that's safety, right? And I think as as you go up and down that sidewalk, you've got streetlights, and those streetlights are lighting this street. Um you even said, Elizabeth, you drove up there today and it kinda looked lit. When you're not driving, when you're walking and biking, it is a lot darker in those sections, and I think that section in front of the school. Feels a lot darker than the sections further north along San Remo, as the buildings get closer to the sidewalk. So you've got ambient light from AT&T stores and all these other things kinda lighting the way as you as you go further north. Um but in front of the middle school, it's woods, anyone could jump out of those those, you know, sections of woods um with your kids. So as a parent, you really think about like, what would get my kids to walk and bike more or actually feel safe, or me feel safe, them walking and biking? I think if we can light up in front of the school, uh it definitely will help all of our climate goals. All of our bike ped goals and getting more kids to do safe routes to school, um so I definitely think it's it's a worthwhile endeavor, and I agree with Donna. That going along Kennedy Drive and going south on Dorset also needs work too, but I don't think it needs to rob from this project, I think it's a really good one. Um and when we look at those streetlights um on Market Street, you know, they are on the street side. They actually don't like the sidewalk at all, I don't know if you've been along Market Street in the middle of the night, it's really dark. So having some dedicated sidewalk lights would be a huge improvement for our city, we don't have any lights around that really start on that. Inside of the sidewalk, the property side of the sidewalk and light out, um it won't impact the neighbors, because it'll be pointing away from them. But it'll provide a hugely different experience, I think, in at four thirty on a winter's night when it's pitch black. Um so yeah, I definitely wanna support uh keeping this on the books right now and and adding that at ultim if we can, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go with Mr. Doyle here first, Susan, and then you.
Uh yeah, Ryan Doyle speaking, I work at the high school and middle school, uh and I walk there, uh just like I walk to most of these meetings. And um normally Tom gets my feedback much faster, so I apologize for not doing that before this meeting. Um but it's so crucial that we light the crosswalks, and if you notice here, you can see that the. The the lights for illuminating them are just ahead of them a little bit, and that's so that pedestrians crossing aren't backlit. Uh pedestrians are backlit, they don't show up to drivers as well, to want a little bit of front lighting on them without the pedestrians themselves. Uh, pedestrians are backlit, they don't show up to drivers as well. To want a little bit of front lighting on them without the pedestrians themselves being blinded to cars that are coming. Right, that's that's an obvious, let's have to go in. There's a couple of other lights in the plan that are nearby that. That also add to the lighting of the intersection uh, where the R R F B will be. And there's two proposed right next to the school's primary intersection, because right now there's only two lights that are just trying to light. The road and there's a lot of crossing in there that's gets pretty dark. Um, so on a certain level. You know, this could be done with, you know, maybe six lights at the bare minimum to just barely address. The exact crosswalks that are discussion and will be worked on. Um, in the scope of this whole thing and if the whole thing should go forward this time around or not. Um, I would say that to go through this time around, it would also need three more lights. Uh, because San Remo intersection's not well lit and neither is Kennedy. Um, you can see those shadow areas right before the crosswalks um, in three places at the edge of this. And, you know, the active transportation plan puts that Kennedy intersection ranks thirty-one of sixty-four. Um, so uh, obviously those wouldn't get touched for a long time. Um, I think the long-term goal is that these detailed questions can get sorted out by um. Uh, another committee and that there will be the policy in place. To make that possible without each of these things coming to you for this like huge minutia. Um, and that's just one more thing that's gotta be an active transportation plan too now. That lighting is really critical and how we light up our intersections is that most important piece. More so than the strips along the way. Um, so, you know, like Nick wants those woods lit up by the middle school. I really wanna see at least six lights in there that are shown near the the crosswalks as just the most important goal. Um, and that if you don't go forward with the full lighting plan as is presented, that you really make that charge apparent to. Whether that's the bike ped committee or the next active transportation plan to make sure that lighting gets included in there. Um, in a way that doesn't hit you guys with the next um, request about lighting.
Thank you. Susan?
Yeah, I I guess I just wanna say, you know, I have a lot of respect for Donna's lighting expertise, um, obviously. But I think that if this project will make it easier for people walking to see the sidewalk. And also to be seen on the sidewalk in this really important corridor and this. Um, mixed use area, you've heard a lot from folks talking about just how important it is. Uh, because it's near the school and all the mixing of different modes of traffic uh, or transportation. Uh, especially with uh, younger people who are inexperienced driving motor vehicles. I think that uh, adding the additional light lighting will just make it safer for kids who are who are traveling in this area. And I um, I was actually looking up um, uh, some, you know, crash data for this section earlier today. Um, and of course you heard um, as we received the uh, presentation on the active transportation plan. Dorset Street's already the location of many crashes. And um, I was looking at information about the twenty twenty-one. Um, crash involving the fourteen-year-old South Burlington student, uh, Joel Strout. Who was hit um, by a car near the fire station while he was biking. And uh, looking at that information, I have now, you know, read the police report and I know this is something you all have talked about. Uh, probably quite a bit in the past uh, before my involvement with you in South Burlington, but. Um, he suffered a traumatic brain injury in that crash and darkness was cited as a potential contributing factor. And I just wonder if the sidewalk had been better lit, um, if the driver who claimed that they didn't see. See him at all until um, they struck him. If it might have made a difference. And these, these are kids that are moving around in this area. Um, and uh, I think it's just really important to keep in mind. The um, the context of this particular roadway. I do wanna just note um, that uh, Joel. Actually passed away just two weeks ago. Um, uh, at the age of seventeen, after spending the past few years in a children's home for the disabled. And um, uh, also just wanna note that even uh, more tragically, his thirteen-year-old sister. Navea committed suicide less than five months ago. And um, I just bring this up to drive home the point that. This kind of traffic violence uh, really brings about layered and lasting trauma uh, in our communities. And uh, just to reinforce the importance of improving safety, especially around our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Can I ask Susan a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Susan, I have a question for you. Um, given what uh, Donna's perspective on lighting. Given what's being improved in terms of the crosswalks and the lighting with the base paving plan. Um, given the cost of these sixteen additional lights. If you had the choice to take that money and put it into this lighting scheme. Or you had the choice to take this money and put it into other areas of safety that are needed for our safe routes to school. What would you do?
Um.
It's a tough one.
So the, I mean, that's an excellent question. And I think if um, you know, it's been. Three years, a little over three years since this. Tremendous crash happened involving a South Burlington student right near the high school. And um. I don't know if the decision to delay the repaving of Dorset, this section of Dorset Street. And to consider pedestrian and bike improvements as part of repaving that section. Um, emerged from or in part from that crash, but it it's been over three years. And I guess. I would say we can spend a lot of time trying to identify what's a better investment over something else. I think that the projects that the task force has identified over their first year of work. All of those projects are really important. Um, so I'm not, as I said, a lighting expert. Um, and can't. Make the, a definitive answer to the question that you ju- just asked. But I would say if that money could be spent on any of those projects. That the task force really believed were critical for students around their schools, that 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 would be great.
And I'll just also say, I saw that Donna put a note up in the, in the chat that. The idea of using, putting just six lights in, in the most critical area might be. What? Might be a compromise that would do the, do the trick. Anyway, we got a tough decision here.
Thank you, Susan. I think Kate Bailey wanted to speak.
Yes, thanks. Um, and I just. Wanna reiterate what's already been said, um, from my perspective over the last three years. Um, when I was, I I'm speaking as a former member of the school board and a current member of the Safe Roots to Schools Task Force. And as a resident of South Burlington. And uh, before we had the task force. The school board was advocating to the city for this lighting. And that was in response to um, parents who had concerns as as Nick Anderson spoke to about. Um, the safety and lighting of the middle and high school campuses. We then convened a task force to prioritize and study um. Our school campuses. And from that, we've had this lighting analysis for folks who um, do have expertise in lighting. The funding has already been allocated as part of the project for the paving. The easements, from my perspective, uh, are already on city and school properties. So there, it seems to me that this, there's a lot of buy-in for at least some of the easements that are needed. And even if other easements fell through, I think it'd be worthwhile to have additional lighting. Even if it was fourteen out of the sixteen or twelve out of the sixteen. And I think it will be quite disappointing for the school community who has been. Asking for this project for three years to have further delays. And um, to not take, to be on the uh, at the meeting earlier today when we were talking about the very real. Um, legitimate perspectives of our neighbors. At the other end of Dorset Street who are looking to get to the cider mill for creamies and to travel to their friends' houses more easily with a shared use path. And are worried about the risk of accidents. We don't have just the risk at Dorset Street, but we have. Evidence that there was a fatal crash of one of our students over three years ago. And to still not take this issue um, up after three years when you have the money. The study and the advocacy is quite disappointing. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate. Anybody else in the audience? So we're supposed to give direction, I think, to staff on this, right? Um, I I think I'm hearing from Elizabeth and Andrew that we don't have the appetite to pursue the sixteen lights right now.
I'd like to put the money aside in reserve, see how the existing plan works out. And then come back and reevaluate in the, in the fall after we see the improvements and take, take another look.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see the the trees trimmed and and see the resulting um, extra lights that are at the intersection. That'll be there, plus the new R R F B uh, in the middle of of Dorset and uh, and with the paving and and find out. What that result is like personally.
The only thing I, I'm leaning in the same direction, but the only thing I would add to that is if. Some analysis from Donna or from uh, Ryan or from staff. Said that adding these six lights or these eight lights would really make a significant difference right now. I would be open to considering spending some of it, but. It's, it's hard to know what the improvements are gonna be. Just when the Dorset Street paving project and and crosswalk work is done. And so I'll leave it at that.
Have I'm, I think I share all the views that are expressed here. And I think I just wanna emphasize that I, I think what we're all saying is that we're not. Uh, opposed in any way, of course, to improving safety features around the middle square high school. We're a realization that we have limited fundings and we're just trying to figure out. What is the best way to maximize that funding to spread as best possible enhanced safety features. Uh, throughout the city, throughout our school system. And um, you know, the 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 expertise is saying that it needs a standard. Uh, there's gonna be improvements. Will that raise the candlelight standards? Is there an option to add um, s- uh, lesser number of lights and and to meet some maximalist. Uh, approach and still have money left to address other safety school issues? Because I think the the reality is, especially with federal funding challenges coming forward potentially. I think uh, the, you know, the budget is is gonna be a com- uh, a a can, a challenge year out, year, year in. And for the immediate future. And I, and I, I don't think we want to just do one safety project. I think we want to do. As many as we possibly can and and to maximize the stuff. So I think that's what's driving. At least that's my sense, our collective decision. So I would, I would share this idea. Of of seeing if the improvements make the the significant difference. Uh, or 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 possible tweaks to get there if that's necessary and still have additional money. Set aside to do other projects around school safety. But again, we're, I think we all agree that two eighty-six should be set aside specifically for that and not for paving.
Great, thanks, Mike. So I think the council thinks along similar lines. This is adequate for you.
So just because th- this is very, this is a, this is a adaptive problem, not a technical problem. There's been a lot of confusion about this. I would suggest that you all actively make a motion that could be something along the lines of. Do not move the project forward at this point, i.e. let the change order expire, but. Hold the two eighty-six balance of the paving fund for future reallocation to some safe routes to school identified project. At a later date.
Which could include the lighting project.
Which could include lighting, but will be a new project.
So moved.
Seconded. We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and it's unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the vote.
So sorry. Item fourteen, which is uh, receive an update from the city, the Northeast Agricultural Trust. And the South Burlington Land Trust on a joint project at seventeen twenty, seventeen thirty Spear Street, currently called the Longview Project. With Jesse Baker, city manager, Tom Bellevance from NEAT.
And Tim, for the reasons articulated um, at the last council meeting that contained this agenda item, I'm gonna recuse myself from. Participation in this item.
Thank you. Tom, come on down. And you can sit down. Jump the stand, hold on.
Tom, do you want me to kick off or do you wanna kick off? So following your last meeting, um, at your um, kind of head nod direction, I'll say. Uh, the city and the property owner on the Longview Project and V H C B met to brainstorm possible paths forward. Um, we came to this idea that is before you tonight that I've now lost in my screens. Where'd it go? Here it is. Um, of uh, amended um, one C provision of the V H C B award. Um, no guarantees were made that the council would um, accept this, but it was an idea for you to consider. Um, NEAT and South Burlington Land Trust have indicated that they would agree to um, this amendment. And so at a high level, the amendment is just, you know, the previous letter of support, all the other conditions in the V H C B letter. With the amendment to the one C provision in the V H C B letter to say that approximately six point two acres. Would be included in the conservation easement but conserved as a transition zone. That leaves the possibility for some portion of the sixteen habitat homes um, shifting onto those six acres if required. Um, by regulation needs. And would leave open the possibility for future affordable housing development, starting fifty years after the date of execution. And conditioned on V H C B's approval, as they previously mentioned. We also included a statement that the parties agree that per state statute, um, ADUs would be allowed. Um, in addition to the sixteen units. Like that's my high-level summary at this point. Tom, what did I miss?
I think you did a very good job, Jesse. I I think we're. You know, we're happy that V H C B did award us the maximum grant allowable for this type of project. And the only pinch point was one C. And I do believe we have a workaround uh, that where all the parties. It's acceptable, just as Jesse laid it out.
So the the big changes are the fact that the the sixteen units might have to penetrate into the six point two. That's covered, I'm sorry, that's covered in that. And that also um, ADUs would be allowed. Um, I mean, that's, that's no surprise, cause they could do it anyway, right?
Correct.
Uh, and then the third thing was that there would be a a fifty-year moratorium on any possible. Extra but affordable housing development in the six point two as part of, as part of the easement, right? From the date of, could you just precisely tell me the date of?
So that, so it's not, um, I think it's kind of reversed, that in fifty years, there would be an option for the future leaders of the city. To consider additional affordable housing at that location pending approval of the V H C B board. But it would have to be affor- per- permanently affordable.
And just, when does the clock start on the fifty years? So what?
The, the way it's currently drafted, it starts at the day of purchase and sale execution, I think. What did, what did I write there? It says date of execution.
Okay.
I didn't say purchase and sale, but I meant purchase.
Okay, okay.
I could clarify that.
Okay, good. Um, so that, okay, so that, so the V H C B agreed with that, you agree with that. And tentatively, th- this is what's in front of the council right now.
So.
As an addendum to our original support letter.
So NEAT agreed with it, South Burlington Land Trust agreed with it, we think Habitat agreed with it. The, the V H C B was absolutely at the table for this conversation, but their board has not taken this up yet. But we got indication that there was. That they were kind of same as me, like there was a path forward, the board still had to do the work.
I guess the, the executive director of V H C B was at the meeting with Jesse and the other city staff. And I believe it was Gus that mentioned the fifty years. So this whole idea was coming from V H C B. So I'd be surprised if the V H C board did not go along with it.
All right. I guess I wanna open up to to council discussion. I mean, my personal opinion is that to me, the fifty years sounds like a really good compromise in terms of. Of our ability to use open space money to pay for this land. Um, fifty years is a long time and uh, a future council could decide how. Um fifty years is a long time and uh a future council could decide how they would deal with that when the time came. Um so I I'm personally comfortable with that, but I wanna hear what the rest of the council says. Lori, do you wanna go first?
I'll just say that um I did not attend the January twenty-fourth V H C B meeting. Um but I heard that at that meeting, V H C B really had said that. The decision about how this goes forward was being left in the hands of of the city, in our hands, basically.
Could you repeat that?
That at the at, and you can tell me if I have this correctly, that at the V H C B meeting on the twenty-fourth of January. They basically said that. This issue is now in the hands of the city council and what we decide is is gonna be governing how this moves forward.
Was that correct?
That's the impression I got from Gus a number of times at that meeting.
So um. I think that this project um. Checks a lot of boxes for the city. And for the community. Um. We will, with this one project, double the number of afford affordable. Homeownership houses in the southeast quadrant. We provide connectivity for the active transportation plan. We provide easements for. The city utilities and we extend the conservation. I um. If this property was owned by somebody else. Who had a different intention, we might have a very different project in front of us, but. We're working with a group that intentionally purchased this land initially for the purpose of conservation. And they, through working with the city, came up with this proposal. The proposal meets their needs. They could sell this land for a windfall if they chose to do that. The argument of um this being a city buyout or bailout is is. I don't think realistic, given the value of this land if it were to be, if the owners chose to develop it. Um and in terms of negotiating, um. I feel like we're negotiating with a benevolent partner, not with an adversary. And I wanna come up with a win that's a win for everybody and I don't feel a need to. Push anybody outside of their comfort zone to get to a win that provides us with so much good for our community. So um. I would like to see this move forward.
Thank you, Lori. Mike?
Sure. Yeah, thank you everyone for taking the time to continue to explore the options here. I think um I think I've been very clear from the upfront that for me. From my perspective, we are protecting fifty-one percent of our land in the the city already, which is the objective of our city plan. Uh what we are challenged is is on housing. For me, the critical issue was housing. I think I've been very clear from that from the beginning besides the process. And for me, fifty years, uh the crisis that we have with housing is is now and the challenge is now. Um we we have the possibility of sixteen uh housing. We not clear how quickly that will. Come to to be. It's there are limited resources. We haven't yet addressed the issue of who would handle the cost permits management of the whole process. Uh but long and short of it, for me, fifty years is is a timeframe that to 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 use four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of money that would. Ostensibly be there to address the 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 decisions that come out of our master plan. Uh and to get sixteen houses, that will be probably built, as I understood correctly, a couple of year over, I think they said up to eight years. Uh and not be able to revisit that issue for fifty years is is for me just too long a timeframe.
Thanks, Mike. Elizabeth?
Um thanks, Tim. Uh I have struggled with considering this project. Um really since my very cautious vote of yes um that that happened uh back in September. Um when the council developed sort of a letter of conditions and um I. I have not seen the major benefit of this project being in permanently conserving the land. It's really, and and I think V H C B. Validated that with their assessment. Um so I have seen the primary benefit of this being the permanently affordable housing. And what I've str- I I absolutely struggle with the fifty years. I know what I brought up at our last meeting was the notion of. Some kind of fixed term easement that was more in the in the ten-year to, you know, ten to twenty at the max. Um and that really would accommodate sort of a building period for the existing sixteen. I think the A D U was a creative add, but I think the probability of. Adding some incremental housing there is very vague right now, um whether it's attached or separate on those properties. And what I also said uh in our first public meeting was if there was new information that came available. You know, I would factor that in and one of the big pieces of information for me is the notion of city green and the potential to use funds for that. Um I'm also uh very concerned about federal funding in general, uh but would also like to um. At this point, really hold off until we get the master plan for open space and and recreation. Um the fifty years is absolutely a showstopper from my standpoint. And even though I am intrigued with the notion of any permanently affordable housing. Um I I just can't support moving forward at this point with particularly with that timeframe.
Can I ask you a question, Elizabeth? I hear that where we are with fifty years is basically a no because a tide boat is a no. I don't know that there's any chance this would be acceptable to anybody. The Land Trust, NEET, or uh Habitat. Um but. In the interest of trying to get to yes on this council, would if if the fifty years changed to twenty years? Which you said was your absolute max. Um would you consider voting yes on this?
You know, Lori, what what I spent a lot of time um thinking about over the past since we saw the the three conditions. Was what would it take to get to yes? Cause I really. Wanted a path to get to yes. Um and I think. The challenge with that from my standpoint is if tho- if that's what came back. From the conversations with all the the partners that were at the table, I think it'd be a harder decision for me. Um it would have been a harder decision for me to make. The issue I have is. It came back at such a preposterously long period of time that to me, it's also an indication of. As we go through the conditions in the council letter and V H C B's conditions. Is this, is this what might be expected with every condition and and I worry. That what I think everybody en- envisions this project could be. You know, ten years down the road, looks like a very different animal and there would be regrets associated with that. Based on the fact that, you know. The uh the notion of some kind of a um transitional zone hasn't, you know, came back with a fifty-year window on it. So the the constant negotiation back and forth, I'm taking it as a signal that. You know, this is what the parties came back with and I'm saying no to that.
So as disappointed as I am with where we are, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of point in. Carrying on this discussion much further.
Yeah, we have, we have two four, two not four and a recusal at this point.
At this point, at this point, it goes down. And so as much as I want to find a path to yes, um. I don't hear it anywhere. And. What do we do? Talking for another three hours isn't gonna change it.
No, I don't think it is. Um the the action that was possible action, was that a possible motion by the the council?
Uh yeah, it was perceived as the motion to support a draft.
Support this this next draft? Yeah.
And we can make that motion and second it and vote and then we're done.
We we can do that. I mean, do we wanna have any public input at all?
Do we even need to do that?
We, I don't know if we, I don't think we do because I think we have, it sounds like minds are made up at this point, so. Um I can't make the motion.
If either of you s- feel a need to make a motion, we can do that. Otherwise, we can just leave it as a as a.
Just table it with a straw.
Jesse, what do you recommend we do?
So. Sorry, I'm thinking. Um a motion that fails tells me stop working on this. Um a no action motion. I don't, I'm, I'm real, I'm not trying to speak for you, Tom, but uh you know, a no action, no action. Just means you're not taking action tonight and if the parties come back with something else in the future, you would be willing to take it up. I guess that. That's my question is, we have spent, me, Paul, Steve, Condo, spent a lot of time on this. We're happy to keep doing that if there's a.
Some path.
Something, but if there's really nothing. Or if you s- or if there's really nothing, tell us, or if there's a, don't work on this anymore, but whatever the parties bring back, bring it back directly to us. That's a path, I guess.
Well, that quest- question lies with Elizabeth solely. If if there is, if you are, no matter what they come back with at this point, given where you know where need is and. Where the Land Trust is, et cetera. I sort of heard you say that the fifty years gave you a solid no. Even if, even if we came back in twenty years was an option, you're still a no.
Well, I guess my question is why are you looking at me for this? We're a foreign member council.
Because because Mike has already said he's not in on it no matter what. Tim and I have said we would like to see it go ahead and you were the deciding vote. So if you said. There's a chance that you might do something different, then we could leave it as tabled and Jesse could keep working on it, but if you're.
No, 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 no. Just for the record, if you leave it as tabled, I'm done unless there's something to bring back to. Unless somebody gives me something to deliver on to you.
Right, which which in in another aspect of it is there's sort of this this um proposal in front of us, right? Which is, I mean, I think we need to to pa- to to move to um accept this update. And take the vote and that would be the feedback.
Why don't I just move for us to um. To vote to accept this.
So we have a motion.
That's the motion.
I can second it.
You can second it.
So we have a motion and we second. Is there any other discussion?
And just to be clear, you're accepting the draft le- letter as presented?
That's the motion.
Yes.
Right. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And uh.
Opposed.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So the ayes were Lori and Tim and the nays were Mike and Elizabeth. And so it's two two ties with one recusal and so.
Fails.
It fails.
We're done.
Well, at this point.
Can I ask a question of you, Lori and Tim? Are you really okay with fifty years? Which is really more, more than fifty years if you look at an execution date.
I would be totally comfortable with twenty years because in my perception, twenty years from now. This is gonna be a moot point. I hate to say it, but that's what I see. I think twenty years from now, we're gonna be in a very different world and either. This property's gonna be built on or we're not gonna be building any houses and we're gonna be dealing with a whole world to hurt. So to me, I would be happy to accept twenty, but twenty isn't what was offered. And we asked Jesse to go and negotiate in good faith for us and come back with what she could come back with. And this is what she came back with. So on that basis, I would be willing to accept it because I think there's too much good in this proposal. To see it fail, but that's just my opinion, so um. So that's how I, we're hanging with the fifty years. You, Tim?
Ditto.
Can I just clarify? I I don't wanna put, I am not speaking. I'm not offering fifty years on behalf of any other party. We were trying to give you a path forward.
Yes.
So I think if you want to, that could be a different action. You could. Ask me to rewrite this with date of execution plus twenty years and provide it back to the parties and. See what they have to say.
I would love to put that up as a motion. Why don't we put that up as a motion? And so I'm gonna make a motion that we.
Do we wanna hear from any, before you make more motions?
Well.
Do you wanna hear from anybody else? Cause I, it feels be- just, it might provide more information to folks.
I just didn't wanna waste any more time for anybody if it's gonna go down.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion and that we can have discussion if we need to. I would like to make a motion that we modify this proposal. To change fifty years to twenty years and send it back to. To uh the partners to see if that's acceptable.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I I mean. To me, it doesn't address what we just talked about of. Asking folks to come back and come back with their best offer and terms. And we're gonna repeat the cycle again potentially. So I am happy to hear from other members. Um but I don't think it should be council's role to be proposing terms that may or may not. Move forward because it it involves all these parties meeting again and I I just think it's out of order for for that motion.
Tom, do you wanna respond as one of the other partners here?
Yes. Of course, I'm disappointed. I mean, I don't think Elizabeth, Mike, you're really listening to what Gus Sealy said about affordability.
Can you pull the microphone closer?
Yes, and as Gus said at the meeting, how important these houses were, the sixteen affordable units. And again, as far as permitting goes, again, the permit permitting cost, we're not asking the city for any money on the permitting cost. That's all gonna be borne by NEET and Habitat. So again, we realize there's gonna be other things we've gotta go along and do, but all other. Things that the V H C B put in their grant, we've signed off on. All the things that were put in the letter, I think of September nineteenth, uh that the city proposed, we signed off on. Again, the fifty years, it sounds like it's a long time, but sometimes I think it's good that we're gonna leave our grandchildren, our great grand-grandchildren. The opportunity. Hopefully, they're gonna take care of the environment better than we have. Hopefully, they're gonna seize the need of what needs to be done today, not tomorrow or the day after. We are not going to build our way out of this housing crisis on this land. But what we are going to do is we're gonna add about connectivity of our city. That we are talking about the welfare of our citizens, the safety of our citizens, and I take that as. Push that aside. Again, what we're asking the city to do is to participate at a thirty-seven percent level. We're asking the city for funds that equal thirty pers- thirty-seven percent of the fair market value of this land. I don't know, and again, I can't wait till you find that land in the city market. Elizabeth, that the buyer or seller is willing to give you that big a discount. I hope that day comes. I'll be here to support you, but I just don't see it happening. This land is here now. But I just don't see it happening. This land is here now. We had the, uh. The open space committee was here, they did their project, they identified the, the, the land. I don't think it gets any sweeter. The only reason we got into this is I am a citizen of South Burlington. I love the city of South Burlington and it's a way for me to pay back all the good things that the city of South Burlington. Has given me and my family. That's the reason we are doing this. The additional sixteen homes is a very big plus in doing that. That's been a great addition as we worked through this project for, I think, twenty-seven months now. We have been on this. We've never went to a point where it was go, no go. We've always met. Everything that we've been asked, and again, I think we were looking at fifty years seems like it's unreasonable. But it's a great compromise. It's not forever. Let's leave something for our children and our grandchildren. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. So we have a motion and we have a second. Do you wanna?
I just wanna make one more comment.
Sure.
And that is that I think that. If this project goes away. I think that in not too many years from now, we will look back and. Regret that move. I really believe that and. Prove me wrong, but I, I will, I will put a wager on that and so I just want that on the table.
Thank you. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
So Lori and Tim vote aye, those opposed? So Mike and Elizabeth vote nay. So that's where we are. So again, with one recusal, right, it fails. Thank you for your time.
You're, you're welcome.
Is there no public?
One, one second, Megan, I just want to, um. To say how much I appreciate all the time, effort, money and heart. That you folks put into this and brought forward as an offer to our city and, um, I'm very sorry for the outcome.
I appreciate those words, Lori. I feel, sitting here tonight where I feel bad is we have great volunteers. This has been a volunteer project. The people of the South Burlington Land Trust, what we are telling them. What we are telling the people that have served on these committees that this city council appointed. We are telling them, thanks, but no thanks. It's a sad day, but we'll get through it.
It looks like Megan wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I, I do. I, I do share the concern that this is a mistake. I would encourage you all to look at Queensberry Road, um, which was a project done, oh boy, before my time. Maybe in the nineties, um, and there are affordable houses. It's, it's right next to Kirby. And Patchen Road and it is next to a, a natural area. And all of those homes on Queensberry are affordable perp- into perpetuity. And this is a project that was done, um, I believe with, um. V H B and I, I know, having walked to those houses, perhaps some of you have walked to those houses as well. That those people are very grateful to have that affordable housing. In a very desirable part of our state. Across the street from a, a natural area. I, I do not see. The potential for sixteen affordable homes being built within our zoning regulations. Without this kind of outside help. And partnership. I encourage you all to go to Queensberry Road and to look at those beautiful homes, they're duplexes. Look at the families, look at the kids riding their bikes on that road, look at them going to school at Chamberlain. And then on to the other schools and remind yourselves that you said no. To sixteen similar homes. I'm disappointed.
Thank you, Megan. Did you wanna speak, Mr. Doyle? Please come up.
Ryan Doyle speaking. I, I think if, if parties are interested in coming forward, um, and moving ahead with conservation. There is gonna have to be more housing. I think it's been like that since the beginning. Um, I, uh. I've grown up, spent my whole life in Vermont and not only will you guys not be here in fifty years. I will also be dead in fifty years. That is an obscene amount of time. It's not a compromise, in my opinion. There are six acres of land that is very low ecological value. I can understand why it looks pretty to people who aren't. Who didn't grow up in nature the way I did. I walk through there and I just see invasive species. I shouldn't say just, mostly invasive species. It would be better off for that land to be cleared. And removed of those invasive species and put into property in a way that would keep it maintained. So if they come back with a plan that has more housing, that actually connects to both the neighborhoods on either side. In the way that we're talking about with the city plan, the way that residential neighborhoods have good, strong connectivity. Rather than being isolated developments, then there's so much more potential there for the community to really come out. And support something like this. And I hope that that will come back on the table at some point.
Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else? Sure, Sandy, come on up. Is the microphone on?
Oh, no, it wasn't, sorry.
Yep, you got it.
Sandy Julie, this has clearly been difficult for everyone. I happen to believe there's potential for a better outcome as a result of the votes tonight. But I would really, I'm hearing what sounds like. Approaching demonizing of the people that voted no. And I would really like there to be more. Acceptance and commitment to, um, a better path forward for this land. I think six acre, I think the amount of money to conserve what one of the V H C B board members called. Self-conserving, uh, and ignoring the potential for housing on the six acres in our housing crisis. Can't be ignored. Uh, but I thank you all for your effort and I know it's been difficult. But I would like to have a sort of a constructive and mutually respectful. Effort forward on this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. So we're gonna move on to item fifteen now, which is, thank you, Tom. We, we can convene as liquor control commission without the city manager, I think. Can I have a motion to convene as a liquor control commission?
So move.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. We also have Andrew back. All those in favor of, in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, so it's unanimous. We are now in liquor control and so we have the need to approve Root. Future first class restaurant bar and outside consumption affirmative, Windjammer, first and third class restaurant bar and license. Outside consumption permit, King Smoke Corporation Tobacco License, Red Barn Market and Telly. Second class liquor license, Shelburne Road Variety LLC, second class liquor license, tobacco license, tobacco substitute endorsement, Trader Joe's East. Second class license, Gracie's Liquor Store, second class license, tobacco license and tobacco substitute endorsement, Simon's Store and Deli. Second class license, tobacco license and tobacco substitute endorsement, Gracie's Store and second class license tobacco and tobacco substitute. Can I have a motion to approve these applications?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Can I have a motion to come out of liquor?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, we're now out of liquor control commission and we're at other business now.
We're actually at the.
Well, we're at, we're at the special fifteen A where we're gonna, uh, talk about, uh, the next meeting. And the fact that you are going away for two weeks, starting Friday.
So I think I've worked this out.
Okay.
So just, um. So we just, right now, we have a meeting warned for Thursday at three thirty. Lori will be arriving around four fifteen, four thirty, Elizabeth will be leaving at five, so.
I will probably be coming.
Y'all are killing me here. Can tell you in the morning. So that, I, it is very important to me that you are all there for my review. I don't think we, so. And we do need you to hear the FY twenty-four audit before town meeting day. So at a minimum, if it's okay with those who can attend. It would be really helpful for us to keep the February sixth for N R C C interviews for people who are currently scheduled to come and the audit.
Yes.
And postpone my review.
Too.
Well, so here's the options I think we have, given that Lori and Mike will both be gone and maybe others of you that I don't know about. We can either do call an emergency special meeting tomorrow morning for Wednesday at between three and five. Or we're looking at March tenth. I, I'm fine to postpone it till May, March tenth, if not everyone can do Wednesday at.
Wednesday, three to five works for me.
Again, I, I think it'll work for me. Let me tell you in the morning, but I think Wednesday, this is fifth of February, Wednesday, three to five, correct?
This is the day, yes, day after tomorrow. If it takes two hours.
You wanna try to do the Wednesday, three to five?
I, I don't think we'll need, well, you all tell me if we're gonna need two hours. So in order to meet open meeting law, we will need to warn it by, let's say, one tomorrow.
Um, like ten o'clock.
But we can also cancel. We can, we warn it, but we cancel if we have to, right? Is that problematic? Okay, okay. So tentatively.
Three to five.
On Wednesday the fifth and we'll find out tomorrow.
So if that doesn't work for whatever review.
And the temp doesn't work.
Then we're, we're into April probably for the four of you five of you all to be together.
Is this, that suspense is killing you, that, what the review is like, is that?
Well, I think there's some, I, I think there are some boring conversations we, we need to have.
March, Monday the tenth.
I'm in town. I am here.
I would say we do it the fifth.
Fall back is March tenth, excellent.
Jesse, would it be better for you to have it done sooner?
No.
No, no, it doesn't matter, okay.
Let's do, I mean, let's shoot for a fifth, I will.
So the tenth at what time?
So that will just, or well, s- six thirty, probably like a regular council meeting, Tuesday night.
Okay.
Um, so just for you, for your awareness, on the eighteenth, right now, I have, for, so for your next regular meeting. The eighteenth, we'll do the rest of the N R C C interviews, we'll do the winter bond pool paperwork for the water tank debt. Uh, we'll do the, your consideration of redoing the allocation process for the FY twenty-five social service funding. You'll have. The social service funding is the, um. X number of dollars you put in the budget every year to give to small nonprofits. I need to decide how you wanna allocate that. Introduction of a nuisance ordinance, naming of city assets or an underwood agenda item, however you want me to call that. Settlement agreement with Bourne. The, the police contract consideration and possible action to review. If we do my evaluation, maybe my evaluation and an executive session on AFSMI.
And the police evaluations done in executive session or?
So the police contract, you will hear an executive session and if you are okay with it, you will come out of executive session to ratify it.
Question for Colin. Is the, is the draft noise ordinance language, um. Complete already?
I haven't seen it, so no.
Yeah, okay. If it's possible for, if it's possible for me to get that in advance of the eighteenth, more than the Thursday. I would like to be able to put comments forward on it, which I could send, but I'm not gonna be able to be at that eighteenth meeting.
Are you not gonna, not gonna have, no internet?
It's.
Spun.
We fly on the nineteenth.
Oh, okay.
And it's the last day.
Okay.
And it'll be a tough day to try and.
Could be a party, huh?
Tim, do you wanna do it a night you're gonna be there, Lori?
I would rather do it a night that I'm gonna be there, but I, if it has to be that night, I can miss it. I just.
It, it is just the introduction. It's not even the first reading. It's just the introduction.
Okay. Oh, then that's no problem at all. I thought it might be decided that night.
Elizabeth?
Thank you.
I don't know if you need a motion on this, but I would like to move the underwood naming until we actually have a naming policy.
Yeah, that's a good question, um, but we, we need to get something on an agenda for that because we've delayed it for quite a while.
I understand that, but we also have talked about having a naming policy.
We did, we did talk about having a naming policy and this is an issue that has been. On the table prior to that conversation and it's something that speaks to. Some level of, of an agreement that was made by the city. I hear, see a head shaking now.
Shaking.
Alleged. Alleged, uh, agreement that was made by the city or conversation that was had, whatever it was. I would like to see this addressed before we do the, the policy, just because of its history.
I agree with that.
I do too, yeah. It should be pretty simple and pretty fast. I mean, and then we'll just go on it.
Do, do we have a sense of where we're going on that?
I think so, but let's wait till we get there.
I don't have a sense of where you're going.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Well, I thought we already talked about the fact that we, that we would.
Overlook at Underwood?
Yeah, we'd like that, right?
Underwood.
The, the council expressed interest in saying overlook park and Underwood or overlook and Underwood Park or whatever.
I know I've had no conversations about this.
Yeah, we, we, we all did. Were you not on the council at that point?
Yeah, I remember it was on it, but I didn't, it wasn't a head nod or agreement that I. Was, it was tossed out there.
Unless you miss that day. This is why it would be good to have it on the agenda.
Uberd Underwood.
We were all on the council for when the Underwoods spoke to us.
Yes, yeah.
But there wasn't a clear, it was, it was somehow we wanted to recognize.
Right.
That was one possibility.
There was a naming suggestion. It was overlook, Underwood, I don't remember exactly what.
But it was just one of the suggestions.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a suggestion.
Yeah.
And I, and I had asked if that would actually leave them feeling whole, so.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're moving towards something, but what that something is, isn't totally clear.
But can we agree that we need an, an item to discuss that? Because we've already had that conversation with them and if we wait for a naming policy, that could be another year. You know?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but having the family present and some suggestions made. Is not a commitment and that, that was the same meeting that requests for a naming policy came up, so a lot of times come by.
Well, do we have a naming policy in the bucket that we can just pull out and look at?
No.
No.
Not even out of the bike rack.
That's a bunch of staff time, so.
It's not even out of the bike rack.
What time range?
I think we owe it to this family to move forward on this.
Say again?
I think we owe it to the family to move forward. Um, wha- whatever, I guess, the, um, current staff recalls of the conversations, the family recalled something really clear. Obviously, so there was some discussion. I don't believe they fabricated the whole thing. Um, it sounds to me like we owe them something.
So I think I'm seeing at least. So I think I'm seeing at least uh two votes to put it on the agenda as naming of something for the Underwoods. And we will. Well.
At least two.
We will. Be something to react to.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think I need anything else on agenda, thank you.
So we're gonna um. Take away item seventeen because it's not needed. Uh we have item eighteen and nineteen, which are two executive sessions and who has?
So. I move that the council make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge of the council discussion. Of negotiation or securing of real estate purchase and lease options and confidential attorney client. Communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the council. Relating to the Dorset. Street shared use path. Would clearly place this public body at substantial disadvantage.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 So I move that city council enter into executive session under one V S A three thirteen A one F and two for the purpose of receiving confidential attorney client communication. And to discuss negotiation or securing real estate purchase or lease options relating to the Dorset Street shared use path, inviting. Jesse Baker, Steve Locke, Eric O'Quaillan, Colin Neal into executive session.
Can you just invite Paul into?
And inviting Paul Connor.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We're now in executive session.
Motion, second? Okay, so uh I move that the council make a specific finding, premature general public knowledge of the council discussion of the negotiation securing real estate purchase and lease options. And confidential attorney client communication made for the purpose of providing professional services to the council would clearly place this public body at a substantial disadvantage.
Second. Your motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Sue, I just sent you those motions.
That the city council enter into executive session. Under one V S A three thirteen A one F and two for the purpose of receiving confidential attorney client communication and to discuss negotiation or securing of real estate purchase. Or lease options inviting. City manager, Jesse Baker, deputy manager, Steve Locke. Paul Connor and Colin Neal. And Eric O'Quaillan into executive session.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anymore? Okay, so now we're in executive session?
Hold on.
Hold on, hold on.